Okay, good evening. Thank you all for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This mic is very loud tonight, okay. So I'd like to welcome you to the Coeur d'Alene School District Board Meeting for October 1st, 2018. Would the gentlemen please remove their hats and everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'd just like to thank you for being here with us tonight. Before we get going, I'll just go ahead and introduce our participants up front here this evening. I'm gonna start at my far right with our Clerk of the Board, Ms. Lynn Towne. To my immediate right is Dr. Steve Cook, our Superintendent. To my immediate left is Mr. Tom Hearn, our Vice Chair. Then Lisa May, Board Member, Tamara Pickford, Board Member, and Jennifer Brumley, Board Member. My name is Casey Morisro and I'm the Chair of the Board. Public comment on district-related items is scheduled near the start of this meeting. Please sign in on the sheet provided at the entrance door. Please note, because of the diversity of issues, members of the Board will not respond to public comment made during tonight's meeting. Instead, issues may be recorded and referred to the proper staff person for follow-up. Comments may also be submitted to the Board in writing through the Clerk. So we've got a big agenda in front of us here. We've got a couple exciting things up front. But let's do a little housekeeping here. So is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Sound moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for September 7th, September 10th, September 13th, and September 24th?
Sound moved.
Before we go ahead and vote on this, I'd just like to throw out a suggestion there and see what you guys think about the idea of moving our minutes to the consent agenda for future meetings. Does anyone have a problem with that, or are you okay with giving that a try? And then, you know, if there's an issue, we need to make a correction to the minutes. We can just pull it out from the consent agenda, but just to streamline that part of it a little bit. So can we do that in the future, Ms. Towne? Thank you. Okay. It was moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So Board Recognition, we have a couple items here tonight, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Cook here to kick us off.
All right. Tonight, we are excited to have with us the Coeur d'Alene All-Stars Little League Baseball Team. They're just excited because I told them recognition started at 9:00 PM tonight, so they're glad to be next. These young men had a fantastic season. We cheered you on as you prevailed in the Northwest Regional and San Bernardino, California, and again, as you represented our community in Idaho in the Little League World Series in South Williamsport, Pennsylvania, ending with your 5-0 win over Barcelona, Spain. We want you to know that we were following your run and rooting for you all the way, and that we are all very proud of your accomplishments, both individually and as a team. Congratulations on your hard work, your display of sportsmanship, and the way you've inspired others with your achievement this year. So if you guys could stop looking at the screen and come up here, come on up. We'll spread out here so we get everybody up here. What do you do with your hands? It's weird, isn't it? All right, all 13 players attend school in our district, and we have a Board of Trustees certificate for each of them. I will read your names by school. All right, so when I read your name, please just step forward, okay? Don't fall off the step. From Lakes Middle School, Braden Newby. Chase Saunders. Kayden Simons. Simmons. All right, he's not here. Carl Schwarzer. From Canfield Middle School, Cooper Smith. Cooper Erickson. A.J. Currie. Curry. Avery Cherry. Nolan Christ. Kyle Seaman. Woodland Middle School, Jake Danenberg. Chris Reynolds. And Austin DeBoer. He's not here, all right. Let's give these guys a huge round of applause. Wait a minute. Which one of you wants to take the mic and say two words to this crowd about the experience? Who's brave? Now look at her.
Cooper, you're last.
Wait, what do I do?
Just tell how this experience was.
Um, the experience was good.
Like a true leader, right there, right? Again, we just want to thank you guys. You represented us with class and dignity, and you were great competitors, and we're all extremely proud of you. Thank you, and who are we rooting for in the World Series now? Yeah, okay, all right, thanks. Thank you, guys. One more round of applause. Thanks, guys. Oh, this song. So who, somebody was, this is awesome. Thank you, guys. Whoever brought this. I'm putting this up. Former baseball coach, I was a high school baseball coach, so you guys, you're in my heart, right on. Keep going. Yeah, guys, we'll be going until about 9:30. You're welcome to stay if you want.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cook, and congratulations again to Coeur d'Alene Little League All-Stars. Next up, just continuing with our Board Recognition, is our Invest, Inspire, and Innovate Awards. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Pickford, who has that information. And if the booth could throw that up on the screen, that would be appreciated.
Yes, for the month of September, we kicked off the school year recognizing two Teachers of the Month. And I was happy that Dave Ubanks, former trustee, joined as he was still the president of the Kiwanis. So he'll be joining me for the rest of the year for these presentations. But anyways, Lake City High School Teacher of the Month was Mrs. Donna Staub. She's a Lake City High School English teacher. And the Teacher of the Month for September at Canfield Middle School is Kelly Whelan. And along with the recognition, Kiwanis gives each teacher a check for $100, so it's pretty awesome. We're grateful for these two teachers and look forward to recognizing the other amazing teachers we have throughout the school year.
Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, thank you. Why don't we go to our student body reports? And I'll have Coeur d'Alene High School go first tonight. Coeur d'Alene High School here. I'm not seeing Coeur d'Alene High School. Okay. Lake City High School. So ladies, if you haven't been with us before, just over at the podium, make sure the light's on there at the mic, please. And welcome.
Good evening, esteemed Board Chair, Honorable Trustees, Superintendent Cook, and District Administration. My name is Emma Bull, and I am the ASB Vice President at Lake City High School. With me tonight are my fellow ASB officers, President Amani Pereira, Secretary Chloe Teetz, and Treasurer Claire Mitchell. We concluded our homecoming week two weeks ago, and it was an amazing success. Our student body had such a good time with our spirit days. Our parade was the largest it's ever been and featured 31 entries, including royalty, football, our grand marshal secretaries, and so many other student groups and organizations. Halftime of the football game, which we won, was highlighted by our incredible marching band and the crowning of our homecoming king and queen. And our homecoming dance on Saturday night, which featured a record-breaking 1,100 students from all three schools and beautiful decorations, was so much fun for everyone. We also have our senior start coming up next Wednesday, which will feature conference-style breakout sessions in the morning and an afternoon of bonding and games. October is a busy month for us as well. With our Code for Kids Drive starting up this week, in addition, our Student Council will be presenting a breakout session at the Regional Student Council's Conference in a few weeks on hosting successful school dances. Lake City hosted our very successful All Things Senior Night on September 26th, which was attended by 380 people and featured 30 colleges and military representatives. Our college preparations also continue this month. As we'll be offering the PSAT on October 10th, our senior college prep classes have already done one campus visit to U of I and are doing their second one tomorrow to WSU. And we'll be hosting a financial aid workshop night on October 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. PSAT preparation guides are going out this week, and our College and Career Advisor is orientating students on the PSAT. We will also have multiple events happening during Apply Idaho Week, October 22nd through the 26th, including having colleges and our library helping families with applications in the FASF. We are also proud to announce that LCHS had the District School Teacher of the Month for September. Ms. Staub and our Math Department Chair, Mrs. Grossman, has been named Regional Director for Math at School. Mrs. Grossman will be in charge of all Eastern Washington's and North Idaho competitions. And we're already looking forward to hosting the fourth and fifth grade contests in April. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening, and we'll see you again next month.
Okay, thank you, ladies. All right, Venture High School. Good evening.
Um, I'm Rachel Hughes, and I'm representing Venture High School here tonight. And I'm just gonna be going over a different current events that are occurring at our school this year and things that we've gone so far. On October 4th, parents will be attending our parent-teacher conferences in open house. They'll be given the opportunity to meet and get to know their kids and the teachers, and everything that they're doing in their classes. On October 10th, all seniors will be attending career and college-related trips, including NIC, CDA, Parker Technical Education Center, and the Aerospace Center. Everyone is adjusting to the new school year. This year, we have a new attendance policy where we're only allowed to have three absences before we have to make up an hour after school for the credit. And everyone's been adhering to that pretty well. Um, we have opportunity to make up missing classwork for an hour after school every day and just get caught up or get ahead if you desire. The seniors are doing job shadowing for their senior project this year for the first time, and I've been able to shadow a local artist named Chelsea Cordova. And she's introduced me to a lot of new artistic processes and skills, and she's helped me numerous hands-on in the local art community. And, um, I think that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job, and I'm excited to hear about the new attendance policy over there at Venture. Okay. Next up, Coeur d'Alene Education Association Report. Welcome, Mr. Twitchell. Didn't recognize you without a hat.
Oh, thank you. And there they go as usual. All right, Board Chair Morisro, distinguished Board Members, Superintendent Cook, and District Employees, thank you as always for letting me be here. It's crazy to think we're already a month in, with only eight months to go. Still a lot of stuff to get done. Heard a lot of great comments regarding the construction and the new classrooms on there. In fact, in particular, people are really excited about the new whiteboards they have. They just keep talking about how remarkable they are. Anyone? All righty. And that's why they leave early, so they don't hear that. All right. So definitely at the start of the year, where everyone's experiencing a lot less sleep, more stress, there's a lot more germ factories floating around us, also known as students. Lots of people getting sick, but we're powering through it and making do. Tell you that the CEA, we're absolutely looking forward to the CAPS process that's coming up. Very excited for the first full year of that, where we can work with the School Board and the District Office to solve all the problems of the world and get everything going on that. Evaluate all kinds of problem situations, focus on retaining and recruiting all employees for the district, and just hopefully make a better work environment for everybody all around. We're trying to get the Red for Red movement going in full swing. Hopefully soon, you'll start seeing a lot of Red for Red t-shirts. We've been distributing them out. We've already gone through about 150 of them, distributed them out. People are chomping at the bit for more, so we're gonna order a whole bunch more. Please let me know if any of you would like one. I'd be more than happy to get it. We would love for this to become not just an educator-related thing, but anybody, anybody in the community, anybody that owns a business. Just, or even if you don't, just try and encourage everybody to wear Red for Red. This is all about awareness, getting the movement going, getting the state legislature seeing that people care about this, that this is a big concern for us. And if we could, on Wednesdays, get the whole state of Idaho just blanketed in red to where the satellite images just show it up as red. I mean, definitely politically, we're a red state, but also wearing red to let them know that what we care about, that would be ideal and fantastic. Along those lines, though, too, with the election coming up before too long, I'd just encourage everybody to get out and vote. My dad always said, "I don't care who you vote for, just get out and vote." Personally, I do kind of care who you vote for, but I'm not gonna get up here and name who I'm voting for. But please get out and vote for those that are education-friendly. I see, too, on the agenda that there's gonna be discussion of the levy coming up. It's that wonderful every-other-year that we have. As a CEA, we have begun discussing this ourselves and what opportunities could come from it. We are hopeful that, as the Board discusses it and the District discusses it, that we can be part of the conversation as well. As we would love to be part of that, and then also hopefully part of getting people out to vote for it, for whatever the decision says are. You know, and I'll just close once again with kind of my normal jeers for the state of Idaho. When I pulled up in the parking lot, I have a friend that teaches in Idaho Falls. He's been teaching for over 15 years, and, I mean, when you talk about a committed teacher, he is the definition. I would say he's probably one of the top 10 educators that I know in the state of Idaho. Everything about him revolved around the students and their success and doing well. But things just got to where they're at. He got a job offer from someplace else outside of education. He said pretty close to doubling his salary and paying for full benefits for his whole family, and he just couldn't pass it up. So today, he turned into the District his resignation. Partway in the school year, he just couldn't pass it up. And, I mean, this just, once again, comes back to the state. Where is the state's priorities? What are they gonna do to keep the best educators here from leaving? And I'll just leave that with you on closing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Twitchell. Board of Trustee comments, Mr. Hearn. I had you down here.
Yeah, I was, just wanted to say something brief about Mr. Ubanks and Mr. Swallow and about the property that we purchased. I just, I met Dave last week for lunch, and we talked over kind of the history of this purchase of the property. And he talked about how he was approached by John Swallow about a year ago about an education quarter or a campus. And as people know, this property was not, that we purchased recently was not in the District. So it took a lot of patience and a lot of work to get this property, to change the boundaries so that the property could be purchased. Mr. Swallow apparently had other offers on the property, and we appreciate his patience, and I, he didn't, he didn't give us the property, but he gave us a good deal on the property. He apparently had other offers. So I just felt that he and Mr. Swallow and Mr. Ubanks ought to be recognized, also, Dr. Olson, Dr. Cook, Casey Morisro, and others who basically brought this deal home. In my opinion, the property we purchased recently, well, this is just my opinion only, will meet our property needs for a decade or so. It's a, and I just thought that the fact that they were diligent and patient, patience being it takes us a while to do anything, get boundaries changed, I just thought they should be recognized. So I, that's why I wanted to make those comments, and I appreciate their efforts, and I appreciate the fact that we now, I think, have the property we need to move forward.
Thank you, Trustee Hearn. Just while we're at it, I think I'd add Megan O'Dowd and Mark Lyons to that list, who are legal representation for both us and the Post-Falls School District. But they were able to work with the State Board of Education and figure out a way for us, really for the second time in the state of Idaho, to collaborate with a neighbor district to make a boundary change that made a lot of sense for both districts. Thank you to those folks as well. Okay. We are at our time for public comments, and Ms. Towne is telling me no one signed up for public comments. Sorry, young man. I gave you the brief explanation. I know you wanted to see what the public comment was about, but you'll have to wait till next month. Sorry about that. Next up is our consent agenda. And, um, is there a motion to approve today's consent agenda items A through H?
Sound moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on these items? I have just one question for you, Dr. Cook, on item H, which was the Instructional Management System. I know we had, the District had, I believe, at least talked about putting an RFQ out for that. Could you just give an update of where that stands and the recommendation that's being made? Sure, yeah. This is a, we're actually requesting that we continue with our current instructional management system and enter into a contract with them that has an annual cost of $50,000 and some change, but we are doing it monthly. At this point, we've been under contract with them for the past year. I think this is mostly a timing issue. We're just not quite ready to pull the trigger on this until we've gotten a very clear direction in our work with strategic planning and the work with the Board to set kind of the direction of the District. I think once we've got that established, then we'd like to send that RFQ out and get a new updated process. I think it's important that we don't get ahead of ourselves and order a tool to start that work until we know exactly and define exactly what that work is. So this is a month-to-month agreement with School Data Solutions, and they're, they are extremely comfortable with that agreement with, if you guys so approve. Thank you for that update. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other questions, discussion on those consent agenda items? Okay, all in favor? Aye. I'm seeing none opposed, Ms. Towne. Okay. So as you recall, we've put our action items first, but we're having some flexibility with that when we have guests from out of town or guests joining us. So we're gonna have some info items, then we're gonna go to action, and then we'll go back to info. So first up here is Eric Heringer and Daniel Quaid. I understand it's Daniel's birthday today, so thanks for being here on your birthday. It's always fun. And they're here to just preview. We've got a workshop we're gonna host here in a couple of weeks. And so this is kind of a preview to that and some background information as we head into that discussion on our maintenance and operations levy. So welcome, Mr. Heringer.
Thank you, Chairman Morisro, Morisro, members of the Board, Superintendent Cook. My name's Eric Heringer. I'm with Piper Jaffray. I've been working as the District's Financial Advisor for quite a few years now. Typically, when I'm here, I'm talking about bonds. Part of the work we do with bonds is to talk about your other property tax levies. So I'll be talking about all the different types of property tax levies, not just bonds, but also supplemental levies and plant facility levies, and do some kind of, just some background on that, and then also look at some scenarios for what a future levy planning could look like. I believe this presentation's, hopefully on your laptops, definitely have a hard copy that you should be able to look at along with what's up on the screen. So the first thing I like to do is just talk about the three different types of voted levies. Everybody, I've got extra copies. Someone must have stole it. So there's three types of voted levies in Idaho. And oftentimes, they get confused. And so I like to go through the first, you know, in this chart I've got here on Slide 1, bond levy, plant levy, and supplemental. So the bond levy, which the District has some bonds that is passed, and the idea there is that you get authorized by the voters to borrow money, build your project, and then levy a property tax to repay the bonds. It requires a two-thirds supermajority. And what you can use that money for is basically capital projects, but it's limited by what you ask the voters. If you ask the voters, "I want, we want to build a new elementary school," that's what the money's supposed to be used for. And if you want to use it for other projects, then if the ballot title doesn't authorize other projects, you have to go back in front of the voters and ask to use the money for other purposes. So you're limited by what you put in the ballot title. Bonds are used for capital projects. They're not used to pay operational expenditures. When you have a bond, you do have interest costs. So you say, "Well, the bond's gonna be 30 million plus interest," so you have to estimate what that means. And you can go up to a maximum repayment term of 30 years. So you can do a bond, and the property tax liability, if you will, can be up to 30. But that's limited by what you ask the voters to approve. So if you say 20, it's 20. If you say it'll be repaid in 10, that's, it's 10. The state does kick in some money to help offset the interest cost. For a district like Coeur d'Alene, it's not a lot because it's, you have a big tax base. And the districts around the state that have smaller tax bases tend to get a higher percentage. The plant levy, to contrast with the bond, the plant levy's also used for capital projects, but it's more of a pay-as-you-go model. The voters authorize you to collect a specific dollar amount per year. The bond says you can borrow up to this amount and levy to pay it back, plus interest. And that's an unknown number when it's voted, because you don't know what the interest cost is gonna be. With the plant levy, it's authorizing a very specific dollar amount for up to 10 years, annually collected for up to 10. The District hasn't had a plant levy in at least 10 years, and I remember back, perhaps 2002, 2003 was the timeframe when you last had a plant levy. And the District historically, in the 90s, ran plant levies every four years to fund capital projects. And then that switched over to, more recently, you've been doing bonds for capital projects. So you currently don't have a plant levy. The plant levy does not come with the subsidy from the state for the, to offset the interest cost. You can, in some circumstances, use a plant levy to lease/purchase projects. So it is possible to do major capital projects with a plant levy. One of the advantages of a plant levy is it has a lower voter threshold. So bonds, two-thirds. Plant levy, you can get authorized for as low as 55%. But again, it's authorizing a specific dollar amount for, not to exceed 10-year term. Then the supplemental levy, which is a levy that I think the District's very familiar with, it's had a supplemental levy in place for many years, and it's something that needs to be renewed every two years because the supplementals authorize for up to two years. Some districts in the state do authorize it for just one year. The District here has historically done two-year authorizations. It's a simple majority, so 50% plus one for approval, and you It's a simple majority, so fifty percent plus one for approval, and you ask for a not-to-exceed dollar amount for up to two years, and it's, it's more of an operational levy. So, as, as the name says, supplemental maintenance and operation. It's not necessarily for capital, it's, it's more to supplement programs, costs that aren't otherwise paid for by the state to operate the school district. That being said, you could do a supplemental levy to build a school project. There's nothing that would restrict you from saying, hey, we want to do a supplemental levy for two years to pay for a new school. Better to do a plant levy probably for that, but the supplemental has lots, but my point is it has lots of flexibility in terms of what you can spend the money, how you can spend the money from a supplemental levy. So, any questions on those three? There's, there are a few other property tax levies the school district has, but they're not voted, right? So, this is bond, plant, supplemental. There can also be an emergency levy that you qualify for if you have enrollment growth. I think the district recently approved an emergency levy, but that's done at the board level, where the board reviews whether to do that or not. There's also a tort levy, which is a fairly small levy to fund, I think, the insurance program.
Mr. Heringer, just one quick question on that before we change the page there. On the supplemental, you said you can levy up to that amount?
Correct.
So, does that mean if the board chose during the budgeting process, let's say, I think we're currently at sixteen million, so we ran a supplemental at sixteen million, we ran our budget state fundings up, and we, we could choose then to collect a lesser amount?
That's correct. And that's true for the plant levy as well. We have, we have worked with districts that have authorized a bigger plant levy, but because they've got some goals they're trying to meet with their tax rate, and not to exceed our tax rate they committed to their voters, they actually don't collect up to the amount authorized. They leave money that's legally, you know, they leave it on the table, if you will.
I have a question. On the plant levy, the pass rate, so it less than two percent, is that two percent of, and it goes up if it's less than point three percent, and then greater than point three, the pass rate gets higher?
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's a good question. The, so, there's a sliding scale for what the approval rate is, and it, and it basically, the fifty-five percent is if the bond rate plus the plant rate after it passes is less than point two percent, also known as point zero zero two, then it's a fifty-five percent. If it's over that, but less than point zero zero three, it's sixty percent approval. But you have to count the bond together with the plant. Yeah. So, two dollars per thou- so, right now, well, I'll show you in a second what the, what the rates look like, but your, your combined, all three property tax rates is, is like two dollars and twenty-three cents, or point zero zero two two three.
So, most likely, we would, even if we did a plant facilities levy, we would be in the sixty percent, most likely scenario?
No, my, my guess is you'd be in fifty-five percent. Because you don't have to count the supplemental.
Oh, we don't?
Just the bond and the plant. So, that, that was sort of the segue a little bit into, okay, let's talk a little bit about tax rates and what, what combination of levies the district currently has. This, this is a chart that's got the ten-year history of the district's property tax rates. And again, this is, this is not just the bond, not just the plant, not just the supplemental, but the other, the emergency levy and the tort. And if you go left to right, in two thousand, so, you know, the, the tax rates are below two, and then in, in two thousand fourteen, the tax, combined tax rate was two dollars and fifty-two cents. It dropped to two eleven. That's partly because your supplemental levy went down the amount. Then it went back up in two thousand sixteen, and you were two thirty-eight, and then two thirty-one. And when I say two thirty-one, I'm saying two thirty, two dollars and thirty-one cents per thousand of value. That would translate into point two three eight percent. And based on the preliminary data, based on your LT that you submitted to the county and the county and the property tax, the, the market value for the current tax year, we're projecting you'll be at two dollars and twenty-three cents per thousand. So, a little bit of a drop in, in your total tax rate from two thirty-one to two twenty-three. And the goal, the planning goal that I've been working with the district on has been to try to maintain something that's relatively stable. And your market value's grown substantially, and so, that's why the tax rate's gone down a little bit. It's, it's partly because you can't keep it at two thirty-one when your market value's growing so substantially. But, we're trying to actively plan a fairly stable rate. At least, that's been historically how we've, we've managed things.
Can I ask another quick question on this graph? In two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, the purple, all the levies, was that, were those emergency levies?
Two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand-
Eleven and two thousand twelve, you see there's a large purple, and I was, I couldn't recall.
Yes, I, I believe those were emergency levies. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that was the, the plant levy to build K-Tech. Yeah. That was a two-year plant levy, for those who, I, I, I'm guessing most of the board members are aware of this, the, the district, along with Lakeland and Post Falls, all did two-year, basically, plant levy to, to, to fund K-Tech. How quickly things go by. And then, I thought, I think it's helpful, when we're talking about tax rates, to, to look at what, where the district is at compared to the other districts in Region One, which is the sort of north Idaho region. And just for context, you're at two thirty-one, this is, this is, this is last year, right, fiscal eighteen. We don't have the data for everyone else for fiscal nineteen. You're at two thirty-one. The statewide average is three dollars and thirty-eight cents, so just from a, you know, where's everyone else at in the state? This is probably the region that has the biggest spread between Low with Avery at ninety-two cents per thousand, and Mullen at eight oh one, and everywhere in between. But I think what's interesting is, you know, because the district's tax base is so large, you're, you're at sixty-eight percent of the statewide average in terms of the, the tax rate or the tax burden as a percentage of value. And another way to look at this too is, you know, tax rates are one thing in terms of the tax burden, but how does this, how does it look when you say, well, what's the per capita, if you will, the per student levy dollar? So, what we do here is we take your total tax, property tax levy that's submitted and collected, and then compare that to the enrollment. So, for, for fiscal year eighteen, the district's total tax budget for all things, and this is supplemental, bond, tort, emergency, twenty-one point eight million. But you've got over ten thousand students, so your tax levy, the dollar per kid, if you will, is two thousand twenty-five. And that's the third lowest in Region One. And so, you know, you can see the spread of, of information there. So, I think it's helpful to, to know that as well. So, the, the question we, we were asked to, to look at and evaluate as you, as you go into this planning process is what level of supplemental MNO levy could the district consider in the future without having to increase the property tax rate above the current two dollar and twenty-three cent per thousand tax rate? So, that's where we're at for, you know, this year. So, I'll, I'll use a couple of different terms. Tax year two thousand eighteen is the tax year we're in. The levies you just certified and that will be collected over the course of this fiscal year are tax year two thousand eighteen, because taxes in Idaho are collected in arrears. So, those taxes apply to your fiscal nineteen budget, though. So, the fiscal nineteen budget that you approved and submitted in terms of levies is tax year two thousand eighteen. So, if you hear me use those two different terms, I apologize, I go back and forth sometimes, and it can be a little confusing. I'll try to be consistent. But for fiscal nineteen, you're at two twenty-three, and if we stay there, what could that drive in terms of a supplemental levy compared to where you're at today? And then, ask, ask the same question for the plant levy. So, if, if you said, okay, keep the supplemental the same, how much more could we get for plant? Or what if we dropped the supplemental, you know, what, what additional dollars could you get? You could kind of look at the plant and supplemental being interchangeable because they're both levies that you, you, you collect, and it's pay-as-you-go. The bond's somewhat of a different calculation, so I, I, we ask the same question for the bond, and that one takes a little bit of a different calculation. The answer, which I know everyone hates, is it depends. You know, it depends on lot, primarily, how much growth the district will get in its market value. You know, if your market value goes up, two dollars and twenty-three cent per thousand tax rate that stays the same, market, applied to a higher market value drives more dollars. If the market value stays the same, then the dollars are the same. And we can move them around a little bit. So, what we did is we looked at three different scenarios just for the growth that you might see next year. No growth beyond that planning horizon of one year. And that, you could argue that we're being too conservative there because, you know, the, the district's market value's grown on average, a twenty-year compound growth rate of six percent. But because the, the, this market value and, and the property tax system is all in arrears, we can be, feel fairly confident that we're gonna see growth in your market value next year. Because it's gonna reflect the value as of January one, two thousand nineteen, and your mo- your current value's as of January one, two thousand eighteen. And those of you who live here know that things have continued to do well in terms of new construction and appreciation of market value. So, I, I feel comfortable that a, a one-year projection is a, it's a pretty safe projection. So, this is maybe too small to read. I, I, I can't read it from here, but I can read, I can read it on my piece of paper. So, what I, what I've done here is I've tried to lay the groundwork a little bit in terms of historical, how do these calculations work? I think it's good to understand the baseline of how these calculations work before we say, well, what does it look like in the future? So, what I've done here is I've gone back to two thousand fourteen, and I've gone to, for the last six year, last five years historical, plus this year, you know, what do the levies look like? So, in two thousand fourteen, you had a supplemental levy that was fourteen point two million, the bond levy was two point seven, emergency four fifty, tort two hundred and forty-two thousand, for a total, total combined levy of seventeen point seven million. Market value, and then I'm just reading left to right, the market value was over seven billion. So, if you do the math and you divide the seventeen point seven million levy into the seven billion market value, you get a tax rate of two dollars and fifty-two cents per thousand. So, that, that translates into for every hundred thousand dollars of market value a taxpayer has, they're paying two hundred and fifty-two dollars. So, every hundred thousand dollars of market value, two hundred and fifty-two dollars of that, or two hundred and fifty-two dollars would go to the school district. In two thousand fifteen, supplemental levy went down to twelve point four, the bond went up a little bit to two point eight, emergency six fifty-eight, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so up a little bit. But combined, you know, you add them all up, it's fifteen point nine. So, you're down a little bit in terms of total dollars. Your market value went up, six hundred million, just from seven billion to seven point six billion, and your tax rate went down from two fifty-two to two dollars and ten cents. The levy dollars went down, the market value went up, and your tax rate went down a lot. And so, that went from, so, for every hundred thousand, the taxpayer's paying two hundred and ten thousand. Then in sixteen, the supplemental levy went up to fifteen million, bond three million, emergency one point two. You add them all up, you got total dollars of nineteen point, roughly nineteen point three. Market value went up as well, the ta- and the tax rate went up to two thirty-eight. Seventeen, you can see the numbers, fifteen million for the supplemental, you passed the bonds, the bond went up to four point nine. Total tax dollars went up a little bit, nineteen point nine million. Market value went up more on a percentage basis than the levy dollars, so your tax rate went down. And then we tried to, then that's where we tried to kind of hold it steady at two thirty-one. And that was driving, in two thousand eighteen, you got another million dollars to the supplemental, increased the bond levy a little bit. The total tax dollars up to twenty-one point eight, tax rate stays the same at two thirty-one. And then this year, two thousand nineteen, sixteen million for the supplemental bond, seven point one, emergency four forty-eight, tort one hundred and twenty-three, total to- total property tax levy of twenty-three point seven million, market value of ten point six billion, and your tax rate drops to two twenty-three. So, the increase in the levy dollar went up less than the increase in the market value and on a percentage basis, and therefore, the tax rate went down. Any questions so far on, it's just, you know, we're just doing math. So, the next slide, we look at, okay, three different scenarios for growth in your market value. The first scenario, zero percent growth, so, you know, this would be the same total dollars collected, but we can rearrange where those dollars go a little bit. The next scenario is five percent growth in your market value, and then the last scenario is ten. So, the first scenario, no growth, we're gonna still, you know, in two thousand nineteen, collect twenty-three point seven million. In two thousand twenty, which would be the next year, same twenty-three point seven million collected, but we can drop the bond levy back to about four point six million, and that allows you to increase the supplemental by about two point nine million. So, the answer, the answer to the question, how much could you increase the bond, or I'm sorry, the supplemental, without increasing the tax rate? Well, under a no-growth scenario, it's two point nine million. If you look down the next set of numbers, five percent growth, that drives more dollars with a level tax rate. So, the total tax budget could go from twenty-three point seven million to twenty-four point eight. So, roughly, four point one million increase in the supplemental levy. That could also be an increase, or that could be a new plant levy, too. Keep the supplemental at sixteen and go with a plant levy at four point one. And then at ten percent growth, the numbers are larger, and, and the difference is five point three million.
And you're saying the growth has been six percent, though?
Yeah, and it was, well, well, that's a historical average.
Historical average.
We'll look at growth here in a second. I just wanted to kind of lay out these different scenarios, and we can extrapolate from, from there.
So, zero percent is real conservative, five percent is even?
I think five per- well, yes, I think zero percent's very conservative, five percent, you know, would probably be where, you know, you could-
More accurate, realistic, right? Based on the current market values.
Right. And, and before we made any, you know, real decisions on that, we'd probably want to have some conversations with the county assessor's office to see if there's any preliminary thought on what seems reasonable on those levels. Let's look at the summary page.
Um, sorry, could, could you explain quickly the kind of the fluctuation in the bond amount there?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, no, that's a good question. Why, I think the, you know, the question's, well, why, how can you go from seven point one million for the bond levy down to four point six? One of the things that you're allowed to do in Idaho is, for the bond, you can collect to, for, for up to twenty-one months' worth of debt service. So, your, your, your annual bond payment that you need to collect to, to make sure you can make current payments, you know, is about four point six million. That's your annual debt service. But under Idaho thirty-three eight oh two A, and that's why Danielle's here, because she's a bond attorney, and I can cite code, that's the only, that's the only code section I know. Is, you can collect for up to twenty-one months' worth of debt service. So, you can collect for the current year's payment plus a little bit extra from the next year. And the reason that it's in the code is so that you can have a somewhat, some level of reserve. You know, you don't want to just have zero in the bank if you get a downturn in, in the market value, or there's a, a big delinquency in property tax payments. So, what the district's done historically is use that bond levy a little bit to, to help regulate or, or level out this tax rate. And that money that's collected can only be used to pay bonds. You can't collect it for the bonds and then transfer it somewhere else. So, what effectively does it, allows the district to pay down its debt a little quicker. So, in the years, the district's collecting a little more than it needs to make the current payments, it uses that money like we did last year to defuse bonds. And defuse, the defecence of bonds is basically allowing for you to pay them off early. And by paying them off early, you save interest cost in the long run. So, so that's what's going on there, and, and the levy being bumped up to- So that's what's going on there, and the levy being bumped up to 7.1, that's how the money would be used, and then we can back off. Make sense? So here's the summary, and I guess it's kind of the important page, just to start thinking about things. No-growth scenario, you could consider 2.9 million dollars in new, additional supplemental levy, above and beyond the 16 million you have currently on the books. Or 2.9 million for a new plant levy. The bond, that 2.9 million would, on a 20-year bond, you know, bond amortization, would support a $40 million bond levy, right? So you could, no growth, you could do a $40 million bond and not have to increase the tax rate on a 20-year payback. If we did a 10-year payback, it would be less. If we did a 30-year payback, which I'm not recommending, it would be more, but, you know, that gives you an idea. Or some combination of all three, right? A little bit here, a little bit there, and a bond, or nothing. And if it's nothing, then you can also look at, the other question we have, we could answer, which we are not answering here, is, well, if we don't do any increase, and we just keep the tax rate the same, how quickly can we pay off the bonds? That would be the response. Or let the tax rate drop, right? 5% growth in the market value, 4.1 million for supplemental or plant, $54 million bond, or some combination of all three. And then 10% growth, 5.3 million, new supplemental, or additional supplemental or a new plant, up to 73 million bond levy, or some combination of all three. It's important to remember, too, that when we talk about the tax rate, and we say $2.23 per thousand, or $223 on every $100,000 of market value, that if your home is going up in value, your tax bill will be higher, right? If you're, if we're keeping the tax rate the same, and then my assessed value for my house goes up 5%, I'm going to pay 5% more because the tax rate's the same. So that's not, it's not a message of no tax increase, it's a message of no tax rate, and there's a big difference. And then we started trustee Hearn talking about growth, and here's the chart on what your historical market value growth looks like. 2019, the current year, so the district saw 12% growth in the district's tax base this year. 9.6% last year, 8% the year before. There's been some really strong growth numbers, but there's also been those negative numbers. Now, you know, it was the worst recession since the Great Depression. We had rarely ever seen negative numbers where market value was declining. But unfortunately, we experienced that, and the district had four years of market value going down. I don't, it's hard for me to imagine a scenario where that plays out anytime in the sort of foreseeable future. I think we could certainly see a slowdown from these high levels of growth. But the changes that have occurred with lending, it's, I think, harder for the real estate bubbles to occur the way they did going into the last recession. That being said, I think it's a fool's errand to predict where market values are going to go over the next 10 years, with any precision. But the one thing I do like to be able to do is go back and look at, what's the 20-year compound growth rate? And if I could start 20 years ago and say, from there to here, going through the peaks and the valleys, what would be the average growth per year to get from 20 years ago to today? And it's 6%. And our, what I just presented to you was just assuming growth for next year and nothing beyond that. So any growth after next year would just increase the numbers you looked at and allow you to consider something higher or different two years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now. So I do think, you know, do I think 10% for next year is a conservative number? No, I don't. But I think if you're using 10%, you'd want to have some good discussion with the county about whether that's a realistic number to project, just for one year. I wouldn't want you to project it for, you know, every year for 10 years. What I've been doing for a lot of the clients I work with is to take that 20-year compound growth rate, and if I'm going to apply it to a 10-year annual, like, I'm going to plan on growth for the next 10 years, then I'm only using a quarter of that compound growth rate, or half of it. But for a one-year planning period, you know, I think we can, we could probably come closer to that number. Any questions on that? Okay. And then finally, there's been some discussion. I talked about the supplemental levy being a up-to-two-year levy, but there is, isn't, there are some exceptions. There is the ability in Idaho to do a permanent supplemental maintenance operation levy, and there are a few districts that have this permanent supplemental. Lewiston is one of them, Moscow is another. Lewiston is because they're a charter district like Boise. Boise also has a permanent. But Moscow is the one district that has consistently, or has a permanent supplemental levy. And the provisions, the conditions that allow you to consider a request for the permanent supplemental, or that you've had a 20%, that your maintenance and operation levy has been 20% of your general fund expenditures for at least, for the previous consecutive seven years, right? So for each of the last seven years, have you been over 20% of your expenditures coming from your supplemental levy for your general fund? And if that's the case, then you qualify to ask, to at least ask the question, can we get a permanent supplemental levy on the books? And if you, then the provisions to do that are, it's a simple majority, you ask for a permanent, you know, this is going to be a permanent levy, here's the dollar amount, and it's a simple majority vote. So that's, we believe, something that the district now can consider because, as the, this is data that Katie Ebner, your business manager, sent over to me, that you have had, you're, both on the revenue and the expenditure side, the supplemental levy has exceeded that 20% threshold for each of the last seven years. So that's, whether you do a two, if, when you go to consider your supplemental levy, you now, is that going to be a two-year levy, or is it going to be something more? You could ask, you could ask for a permanent levy. And that's, one, maybe one other thing on that, and Danielle, I don't know if you have anything to add on, because this is more, you know, we don't see these very often, so before you went and did it, we'd want to, you know, confirm that all the calculations are correct. But you're, when you ask for this, you're asking for a dollar amount. And so 10 years from now, that dollar amount might not be keeping up with inflation, and that's just the way it is. So you could, what districts like Moscow do is that every seven years, or every five years, they ask to increase it, right? And they look back and say, okay, we've been at this level for five years, our enrollment's up, our costs are up, now we need to look at increasing it, you know, a million, or whatever, whatever the number is. So there is that flexibility, but it is fixed, and it will be fixed until the next vote.
I have a question on that. Are you compelled to take the amount every single year? Or could you say, oh, this year, you know, we've dialed our budget back, we're getting more state funding? Can you then regress in the levy amount, or once it's past that amount, fixed?
Hi there. The statute actually provides that with a majority vote of the trustees, you can reduce it in any year.
So I have a few questions. If this permanent levy thing interests me, not only because it'd be nice not to have to go back to the voters every couple of years, but there's also some political considerations there. But anyway, assuming a 5% growth, as you said, then technically, we could request another, what, we're currently getting 16 million, we could do, say, 20 million, right? And call that a permanent levy without increasing tax rate?
So I, the question, I think-
I'm just getting, I'm just throwing numbers out there, and I'm not real good at numbers, but I'm trying to get an idea.
Conceptually, I would say, on a two-year levy, yes, increase it 4 million without increasing the tax rate. Now, what, the question I have is how high can you go in terms of dollar amount with the supplemental? Do you, does it have to be at a 20% threshold, or can you just ask, hey, we qualify, because we qualify because the last seven years, we've been over 20%. Now we can ask for something that's 50%? That's a question I don't know the answer to.
The statute doesn't give us any guidance on what the dollar amount is. It just says you have to state a fixed dollar amount. So I would interpret that to mean that you do have some room to increase the supplemental levy. I wouldn't recommend 50%, maybe, but something in the middle.
Okay. All right. So we have a lot of flexibility here, don't we?
Yes, I believe you do.
I mean, in terms of numbers. Okay.
Yeah, I think question one is, where are the needs, and where should those dollars be going? And then question two is, if it's in the supplemental side, should you consider a permanent?
So just to kind of go over the timeline and what we've laid out here, is, this is kind of our initial presentation, and just to get us thinking. On October 15th, we're going to hold a workshop, and so we'll be able to dig deeper into this and maybe have some scenarios that we might want to look at. Then administration can have Mr. Hanger run those, and we can see what that might look like to our budget, to our taxpayers, those sorts of things. Traditionally, at least since I've been on the board, but I think going back further, that MNO has traditionally been ran in March, I believe, which means we would have to have ballot language finalized by the January meeting at the latest. I believe last time, we did it at the December meeting on the MNO, January on the construction bond. So that's kind of the process. We have a few months, and certainly, if we met in October, and we have a couple scenarios, you know, we could have another meeting, we could do a public workshop, you know, there's lots of things we could do to solicit input from our constituents, and hopefully do this in plenty of time. So we're making good, educated decisions as we move closer to December or January, where we'd have a timeframe there that we'd be up against. And at our October workshop, Ms. Quaid will be there, Mr. Hanger will not.
I guess one thing I would like to add is, if, you know, as we get deeper into this discussion, is that we really bring the community involved this year into this discussion. So, you know, definitely a workshop that we're inviting the community, but then also getting more outreach, whether it's attending small group events, but really getting kind of a feel of how the community thinks, especially if we're considering, you know, looking at this idea of a permanent levy. I think it will be important to see how our community feels about it. Question for you, you said Moscow's the only district that's been successful so far. Have others tried it, or do we?
So, I don't know if I misspoke. Moscow's the only one that I am aware of that has a permanent supplemental, utilizing this, this provision. You know, there are districts that have the budget stabilization levy, which is, it looks like a permanent supplemental, but it's done under a different provision. The two districts that are charter districts in the state, Boise and Lewiston, you know, they're permanent, but they operate differently, and they're authorized under a different, you know, authorization. I don't know of any others.
I guess I would add that I think that we're probably going to be coming to a time where we're going to be seeing this more often. With the decline in state funding, it's causing lots of districts to dramatically increase their supplementals, which is getting them to this 20% threshold, and it takes seven years of a, you know, stable 20% of your budget to qualify. So I would expect we'll probably see more of this following the recession than we have in the past.
I'd say one thing, I don't, I don't particularly like supplemental levies, but it's a reality that we live with. I sure wish we could set this after legislature had adjourned, because we know how much money we have. That's one of the problems we always run into, is we set this levy, and then we don't know what the legislature is going to do. But that's the reality we live with. Also, for future discussion, I'd like to see us take a look at our tax rate. I know that's about as popular as going to the dentist or something, but I do think that we at least ought to look at, since we are on the low end for the surrounding districts, if we increase it 5 cents, or whatever we decide, just some different scenarios. I know you were given the instructions to not, to not increase the tax rate, what could we do? But let's say we did increase the tax rate, just for discussions, I'm not, for the, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that I would like to see those numbers.
Okay. Can do. Well, I'll put it into the model, and we'll have, you know, have some summary like we did here, where you can show the additional dollars from that standpoint.
All right. Thank you.
Sounds popular, Mr. Hearn. Okay. Any other questions for these guys? And then we can let them go.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay. No questions, just birthday wishes, okay. Thank you very much.
So thanks for letting us be early on the agenda. Apologies to those of you who are waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up on our agenda is the RISE Group, which is Raising Idaho Standards for Education. And I'll give you guys a minute to get over there and get set up. And then we'll kick it off to you guys. Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
So you have a couple options on the slides. Either you can move it yourself, or you can ask the booth to do it, so you can just say, "Next slide, please." Sometimes it'll jump ahead, and if you need some help, just ask them, "Could you go back a slide?", and they'll kick it back for you.
All right, ready? Okay. Hi. Chair Morris Rowe, Superintendent Cook, trustees and staff, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Rebecca Smith, a parent in District 271, and the president of Raising Idaho Standards for Education, which is a local, community-based nonprofit. I'm joined with my colleague tonight, Bill Elliott, who's also a parent in our district and one of our board members. We're here this evening to preview a project we've been working on over the past year in the process of setting our goals as an organization. RISE's mission is to raise student achievement and rates of college and career readiness in Idaho public schools through research-based strategies and advocacy. We are nonpartisan and not ideological, meaning we don't advocate any specific educational approach as being better than any other. We support collaborative and evidence-based solutions to improve student outcomes in partnership with local districts, as well as state-level advocacy to ensure that our schools get the resources they need. Over the past year, several of our board members have spent time in extended interviews with major stakeholders in our district, including board, cabinet staff, local education-focused nonprofits, the CEA, and every principal in District 271. Our goal in undertaking this research was to discover the most pressing issues in our district and discern where opportunities for improvement exist in small and large ways. We focused our interviews on what school leaders see as the main barriers to student achievement, what problems they feel they don't know how to solve, and what supports they need to do their jobs effectively. They were welcoming and open with us, and we were impressed by their dedication, their commitment to students, and their drive to get better. While we undertook this process to inform ourselves and ensure that we understand the full range of issues affecting our local schools as well as we can, we believe there is significant benefit to the district in hearing the candid concerns and unvarnished input of many core stakeholders in our schools. Through our interviews, there were trends that emerged, issues that came up in meeting after meeting. And this is the kind of information that we hope will be helpful to district leaders as they continue their work to serve students and support staff in our schools. For us, the ultimate desired outcome of this work is increased community engagement to work collaboratively to address the most significant issues affecting learning, student learning and growth.
I'd just like to add a comment to Rebecca's points there, to say that what we're, our report is, is we're reporting back what we heard. We didn't attempt to validate what we were told, but we, and we didn't create the message, but we are the messengers of what was stated. So I think that what we've got is a lot of candor and a lot of great, great input that I think you'll find helpful in the process. We've asked for, and Chair Morris Rowe and Superintendent Cook have agreed to a special time for you to, as a board, and also the community to join us for a workshop on this, so we can get into the in-depth findings that we've had and have a more open discussion. So we'll present that full findings of our research and get a broader engagement of district personnel, as well as community folks, to discuss what the meanings are of these, of these views that our key stakeholders have. We also, because we're very appreciative, we have to say that the folks spoke with absolute candor and trust, and they were very open to us, and we're very appreciative of that. And we will put together a full written report to share with all stakeholders after we have the board workshop. the, the board workshop. At the workshop, these are some of the things that we will review with you. And, and keep in mind when I say environmental factors, the, this is not us saying that, this is our view of what the environmental factors are. This is what the key stakeholders and largely what our principals told us are factors that , that shape what happens every day in their schools, that affects the opportunities for their students to, to achieve. We also will highlight some towering areas of strength that this district has, some, some wonderful things. And I'll give you a, a preview of that, just to say, it's our teachers and our principals. They really work, work very hard and are very dedicated folks. We'll share with you also some concerns that were expressed, some concerns that are at the, the school level and some, and some concerns that are at the district level and, and what that, those meanings are. We also just think there's some tremendous opportunities for collaboration, some ways that, that the district within itself can collaborate for improvement, but also some ways in which the community can be supportive and, and collaborative efforts to, to advance the opportunities in our district.
All right. So certainly for any, every stakeholder we met with, it would be student learning and well-being that is their top concern. This is really a set of issues that came together in certain nodes that we identified, issues around principal support, you know, how do we support our leaders to be the best leaders that they can be, around teacher support, that includes professional development and also recruitment, retaining and recruiting the best teachers that we can, which has become an increasing issue. We heard a lot about concerns around student mental health, not only at the secondary level, but very much also at the elementary level. And then some supports that schools were looking for in terms of giving their students some familiarity with the ISAT and other tests. And then we have a category of things that didn't necessarily fit into these other areas. And in the workshop, we'll be talking in detail about, you know, the, the issues that emerged in each one of these categories and then the other category as well. The next phase of our work will involve examining research-based solutions to the challengers, our educators identified. And we look forward to discussing these issues with you at the board workshop and hope some, some of the public will join us there as well. So thanks again for your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. So board members, I'll just open it up for questions and comments for...
I don't know if I have any questions. I, I appreciate your work and I appreciate it's nonpartisan. Appreciate that you're also working, have worked with the administration and will continue to work with the administration. That's real important. And I just, you know, I know you've been working hard on this. I remember talking to you about a year ago, first time I met with you, as I think all the trustees did. I don't know if Jennifer, Miss Rumlin has, but everybody else has met with you at one time or another. Anyway, thank you, and I'm looking forward to the workshop to hear some more detail.
Thank you. And I just wanted to take a second to recognize my colleague, Kristen Baldredge. She's one of our board members and she coordinated almost all of our meetings, which was no small task, and she did a great job.
How will you guys share the data with us? Will it be, you know, I know that you come in confidence with a lot of these.
Yeah, we see protecting the confidentiality of those we met with is very important. You know, it's not a, I don't think a serious concern in sharing our findings, because we were really focused on trends and what came up again and again versus things that individuals expressed. We have a written report that includes some detailed information. It's not attributed to anyone's school and, you know, if, if the district were interested in finding out more, maybe where a particular concern came from, we would seek permission from that person before sharing that. We have, we have very detailed notes on these meetings. And so, you know, at some point, we may look at putting together something a little more comprehensive that includes more of the details, so that you see everything and not just the trends. But we'll need to look at how to do that in a way that protects confidentiality.
I guess my next question would also be, you know, you mentioned some research-based solutions. In the workshop, are you guys going to share with us what these research-based solutions would be? Or what is, what are some outcomes that you're hoping from all this work?
Right. The actual solutions, especially, you know, research-based solutions, is not a focus of what we're, what we're sharing at the workshop. You know, what we're, what we're aiming to share at the workshop is really what we heard from stakeholders and giving you a picture of that. The outcomes we would hope for would be some interest in the district in collaborating around some of those issues. So for example, if we identified an issue that was a repeated concern in terms of student mental health, you know, and the district is, you know, says that they are interested in getting more information about possibilities for resolving this problem, then we would be interested in partnering with you to do some of the research about what's been done around that issue and what evidence says about ways to resolve that issue. So that wouldn't be at this phase, would be at the next phase. But we're looking, you know, we're looking for what issues the district would like partnership on, what things they want to resolve on their own and what things are not a priority right now. We don't expect that answer at the workshop, but that's kind of what the outcomes of this process we're looking at.
Well, thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to hearing what you guys want to know.
Thank you.
Couple things here, just kind of housekeeping on this. So that workshop, we, you've mentioned a few times and I'll mention it also, is October 17th at noon, I believe, in this town. Have we set a location for that? The district office training rooms that we did? So it'd be at the district office in the basement training room, which is a pretty good-sized room, should accommodate 30, 40 people fairly comfortably, other than there's no air conditioning in that room. But by October 17th, we'll probably be okay. So that's one. And we'll get the word out on that, and I know you folks will as well as we move closer to that. Two, I just want to thank you guys for coming in today and for doing this work. I know, and meeting with you a few weeks ago in, in the past, that this was no small task. And I think I've seen your list of meetings, it was maybe 25, 30 of these meetings that you held with individuals at a couple hours apiece oftentimes. So thank you. It's a big commitment and a big thing you've, you've put off here. So I look forward to a little broader conversation and where we can jump into a little more detail and have a little more back and forth on the 17th and see where things go from there.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So next on our agenda, and we're back into action items now. And this first one up here, item C, is just a discussion really around long-range planning committee and some direction for those. I believe Dr. Cook sent an email to us within the last week or two just about this. I think it's something that Long Range Planning Committee has asked for, and I believe several trustees have raised this issue as well, is just making sure we're clear in our direction of, of what we'd like long-range to do as they start their work this year.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd like to, to first just invite Jerry Anderson up to the podium. He doesn't know I was going to do this, but I... And also, I'd like to invite Jeff Voler up too, just as a, Jeff will be serving along with me as a support for both working kind of alongside the board and with long-range planning. And I think one of the things that I've asked the booth, if they wouldn't mind, there were four items that were sent as possible suggestions. And these are only possible suggestions of perhaps tasks that we could ask, the board could ask Long Range Planning to take on formally, or if there was some interest to, to do something that have, have the long-range planning do something other than that. But these were some possible suggestions. And really, nothing more than to stimulate the dialogue. There's just what those things might be. And, and the things that I would like to throw up there is that just that conversation could be something for them to take back and, and dialogue with the board about what that might be. The one other consideration that I've kind of, would like us to think about too, is we've asked for some possible changes in the bylaws to, to consider with long-range planning, just about some naming and some nomenclature of titles, just so that there's not a confusion. I think that's something for a consideration. But, but really just a dialogue to talk about how the Long Range Planning Committee could work in, in direction with the board and, and come to an agreement on what those tasks might look like. And I appreciate these guys for being willing to be kind of put on the spot in a tough situation. And, and I'm glad to go over there and stand at the podium too, if that would make it any easier. But I'm glad to partner as, as a resource in that action as well, so.
So what is the tough situation here?
Just that I didn't tell you, you're going to get to stand in front of the podium on the mic before, before the meeting.
Well, you know, we have a mission statement in our bylaws that, you know, I plan to reiterate at our first meeting this year with the Long Range Planning Committee. And I would expect that, you know, we'll follow that. It gives us a general outline of what we're expected to do in support of, of the board. And, you know, it will be good to be able to address some of these items as well, so we have some specific direction to proceed in, so.
I have just one item that's not up there that, you know, it's, we've kind of talked about in the past. And one thing that our district does not have is its own set of ed specs. And so when we build new facilities, which isn't very often, or even when we remodel, it's kind of a, what, how does our community feel about the prototypical classroom and prototypical school? And I think Jerry would be a great person to give us input on that also with your architectural background. But, you know, I think having the opportunity to have a room full of city, community members, we could probably come up with some talking points or some ideas of what our community thinks about its prototypical school and classroom and actually get it in writing and kind of get it included maybe in our bylaws or a mission statement. CSG kind of helped a little bit with that, but that was a while ago now, and we haven't had that conversation at a community level, I don't think, in quite some time.
Yeah, we, we haven't had our first Long Range Planning meeting yet this year, so the opportunity to get together to organize ourselves for the year is coming up here fairly soon. And we'll have an opportunity to set an outline for the year and give some direction. One of the things that I would like to address early on is, you know, where do we want to be at the end of the year? You know, what do we want to see happen when we wrap it up next spring? And so, you know, I kind of like to get an idea of what that might be and sort of work our, work our way back to our first meeting and, and plan on what, what it will take to get to that point, so.
So I, I would just like to suggest that this, if this board could take some recommendations of providing the Long Range Planning some, some action, focusable action items that they could take back and, and Jerry could take to that committee and start the discussion, whether it's this list or something added to this list or some things that they could then consider. These are very broad, right? There's, and the, the reason for that is to give them, these are all things that, that need to be worked out, and these are needs in the district currently as we stand. And this would be a fantastic committee to be, to engage in that work. And so I think the, the dialogue would be just what is the board's inclination for this list or adding to this list, just as Trustee May has, or what that discussion may look like. But maybe tasking them to investigate some or more of these items.
Like I say, I like some of the wording here, collaborate with staff and engage the community. Both of those I think are important. I think from my perspective, some of the problems we've had over the last couple of years is not, is that the board, we haven't been really clear about what we want you to do. And, and for, and because of lack of clarity on that, then, then you do what you do and then we may or may not agree with that. So I think this is, and I've talked this over with Dr. Cook, I think, and I think Lisa May and I have had, May and I have had this discussion. I think clearly we need to be, have these goals spelled out and us working together better than we have at times or in the past.
Oh yeah, I think that's quite doable, yeah. I'm looking forward to it, actually, so.
I'm not going to jump in unless anyone has an idea here, just as a former Long Range Planning member, and then I was a board liaison to Long Range Planning. You know, I think for me, and I'm going to speak personally, and you guys can jump in or if there's something you'd like to see, but especially given what Mr. Heringer said tonight and the fact that while it may not be this year, but in the future, we know we're going to more than likely need more space. So I think that's key, is that we really focus on what Long Range Planning's core mission statement is, but that we focus on our buildings, the condition of our current buildings, and the growth. And so we might be pulling in some of the demographic trends there as well. We had that work that CSG did, but that's five or six years old now, and we could compare that to what's really happened. And, you know, I think that, at least to me, as a board member, the secondary growth, at least from what I recall in the CSG report, has been greater than what they anticipated. I think elementary growth, they've been, they were fairly spot-on. But certainly, we're seeing pressure at our middle schools. It's been allevied somewhat this year, just as we've had some pressure off Woodland, but our middle schools are all getting very big. So I think, you know, really updating that facilities plan, looking at our building, there's, almost all of our buildings have been, had some work done on them in the last two bonds. The exception would be NEXA, and we have some decisions to be made there in regards to NEXA. And I think that will drive some Long Range Planning's work as we determine, you know, where that school's going and, and where NEXA's going.
Casey, I'd like to piggyback on that also, if that's okay. I think number two kind of is maybe what you were talking about, but, and you can probably remember, when we gave a recommendation for the last bond that we ran, it had a phase two, and I think we should move beyond calling future needs phases. I think we need to really go back and examine what that phase two included. And I think a lot of it has to do with the deferred maintenance and then where is our current growth and how do we adequately plan for the next three to five years. I think we're going to need the assistance of a professional, again, whether it's a company like CSG, like maybe starting off the year, talking about, you know, what are our options? And I know Mr. Voler can probably help us with that. I think those are critical. And coming back to the board, you know, in the spring with a really clear-cut plan as to, this is where we're seeing growth based on data, demographics, and a recommendation that we can adopt or not adopt, I think would be helpful.
Sure. We have a, an agenda planning meeting coming up on the 16th, and so we'll have an opportunity to organize our thoughts a little bit there as well. And even before that, you probably wanted Jeff to stand in front of the microphone and say a word or two, since you hadn't come up here.
No, I think, I think what I would add is that I'm just looking forward to the opportunity to being a support to this committee and being a representative of, of our staff to make this the, the best network we can moving forward.
So if I was going to offer something just personally, like, can you join?
No, it's got to be...
Has to be on. Could you turn that off?
I'm just going to say, if I had to be really specific about what I would like to see is, on the, on the two and three with regards to the three to five-year trend in, in facilities is, we've, we've, we have a large parcel of property. I'm not convinced that that's going to be enough. I would like to know, do we now have enough land in our bank? And if not, how much do we need? And I'd like to know what kind of buildings we need, how much acreage we need for them. That would be a priority if I had to be really specific too. I'd love to have a recommendation at the end of the year of what that looks like, because then we can plan financially for the next three to five years of levers and bonds of that nature. So that's, if you're asking for specifics, there you go.
You know, one thing that's in the bylaws for Long Range Planning is that the committee is able to have their own community forums or input sessions. And I would like to see our community reach out, or our committee reach out to the community and, and listen and really conduct some listening sessions and, you know, what are they looking for? Where do they, how are they feeling about facilities? Bring that data back to us, that would be hugely helpful.
So this is an action item. Yeah, or at least consider something that we could formalize. There's a lot to talk about, and I think we, we just talked about probably 10 years' worth of work in five minutes. And so it would be good for us to kind of tighten this up in what you would want, or at least maybe we talk about some and bring this back at the next board meeting and, and give them some more focus. If maybe that, maybe we just consider these and then have them talk it over and bring it back. But it would be good for us to, to get narrower on our expectations, I think, like Jen just said, is be pretty specific and have some agreement. Or this is cart and horse, we got to...
I think we all are clear that we want a recommendation from the committee this spring on where we may need a facility next. I think that's, you know, especially as we get ready for a levy and a future, potential future bond, we need to have recommendations from them that are clear-cut based on data, whether they utilize a, a company to get that data. I would like to see something that's concrete and on a future facility, future facility needs and deferred maintenance.
So, I mean, I agree. I, I think if we focus on kind of the... So, I mean, I agree, I, I think if we focus on kind of their, their mission statement and their bylaws, that at the end of the year, if we had a plan, and I know it's often been a 10-year plan, but if we had something that, similar to what we had a few years ago, that gave us, okay, this is what we see as the top priorities for the next three to five years, or two to four years, whatever it is, and then, you know, make sure we're identifying what maybe the next wave might, may or may not be, I think that's going to be super beneficial on our planning as we move ahead, and I would think, just given some of the information, you're going to have to do some, some updating on demographics, and look at trends and those sorts of things. Personally, on the deferred maintenance, I would like to see that as a board member, be something that, that we annually have a deferred maintenance plan, if you will. I see that personally as more of an internal, created document, just because so much of that right now is in Brian Martin's head, and I think we need to start extrapolating that, because we know he's going to move towards retirement here. We may not let him go, but I know he wants to at some point, so, that's, would be my thoughts, is let's not bog long-range planning down on deferred maintenance, because I think it'd be a lot of regurgitation of Brian Martin, probably Jeff's thoughts in regard to that. I, I see us being able to handle that within our internal folks, and maybe with some assistance. I know Brian and Chris last year spoke with someone, so there, there are some agencies or organizations that can help with kind of creating those deferred maintenance plans, but that would be my focus. I'd just be concerned of putting too much on long-range planning, especially if we're asking them to seek some community input and those sorts of things. I say, let's focus on maybe three to five a year, or two to four, whatever we want to call it, and then beyond, and kind of have...
I like that, I like that number better than 10. 10 just never seems to be a reality, I don't think.
I'd also say the recommendation that we've, we've received is to switch to a seven-year plan. Olivia Metz last year recommended that, and that's something that we can amend the bylaws to do. I think she, she felt as though a five- to seven-year plan is what's broadly used by communities.
Okay, clear as mud? We can work with that?
I think we can work.
I think we can work with that. I think it's, you know, when we talk about a deliverable in June, May or June, I think it'd be nice to have it a little more tight, and so I think it'd be good for them to have their first meeting, and then maybe we, we incorporate them back into an agenda for the November meeting, and, and let's get a little tighter on an agreed process, because I do feel like we've got an awful lot of things we'd like to have answers to that would be easier if we could get it a little more specific.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're on to page two here, and D is up next, as course pacing guides for action. We saw these last month, and I see Dr. Nelson's up there, and this starts on page 79 of our packet.
No, it's not a problem. Good evening, Chair Morris Rowe, Superintendent Cook, and members of the board. Tonight, item D asks you to take a look at our course pacing guides that were presented to you last month. You may remember, we have brand-new state standards for defined and performing arts, so we have brand-new music pacing guides in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. In addition, we had a new course proposed by Canfield Middle School for multicultural art. There would be an elective humanities offering for them, as well as a high school redesign for young adult literature. Each of those have been out for 30-day public review, and other than a few little typographical changes, have had no public comment overall.
Okay, so we saw these last month, yeah? Is there any, well, yeah, let's go ahead and make a motion, and get it seconded, then we'll open it to discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve the course pacing guides for K through five music, seventh through eighth multicultural art, and ninth through 12th young adult literature as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this, or any questions regarding these courses that we saw last month? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. We'll see you in a little bit. Okay, next up is the continuous improvement plan, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Cook, and I believe Dr. Cottle.
I think, yeah, I think Dr. Cottle's going to be presenting this along with Kate Keiner. And that, I think, is this your first presentation? Yay, for her. We're going to ask for approval of our continuous improvement plan as a draft form. This is similar to, very similar to the, the learning management system conversation. Some of this data is very dependent on decisions that we are going to make in the very near future with regards to the direction of the district. This particular plan will meet the statutory obligation of having this uploaded into the system prior, by this date, to meet the expectations of the state. It is not what, as robust as it will be, once we, you know, we've got some things in the agenda that are coming up. For example, the futures report, that was commissioned, I think, back in the spring. That data will be shared with the board in November, late November. We would like to build in that report, the findings from that report, into our continuous improvement plan. The, we're in the process now of accepting bids for a curricular audit. That will be built into this plan, and so I think this, this actually carries back, and I'm going to let Dr. Cottle clarify, but I do want to set the stage with the idea of, back in the spring, I think Dr. Olson was presented with, do we want to write this plan as it would be formally written by the district staff, with this caveat that as soon as the superintendent search was finished, that there would be a completely new strategic direction kind of set, and so there was kind of the general direction of, let's get through this, and let's make it happen, and let's do what we are expected to do, but let's get the board's guidance, and once we're all together as a team, building the right direction for this moving forward. So, it is a, it is a plan that we can submit, and will meet the expectations of the state, but we have a lot of, a lot more work to do on this, in, with regards to setting the direction for the district in the near future. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Cottle and Ms. Keiner.
Well, good evening, Chair Morris Rowe, Superintendent Cook, and trustees. Again, like Dr. Cook said, this really is a shell, a shell of a plan. Our, by statute, we really have three components of our continuous improvement plan. The first component, I don't know if technology wants to pull it up, or... Our statute requires that we have it on our webpage by October 1st, and so we'll navigate, but people can find it on our webpage by going to our district and the continuous improvement plan under C. It's always great when the magic happens right in front of you, isn't it? And we really have three components. The first component of the continuous improvement plan really is almost like a report card. They have metrics that the State Board of Education requires us to report on, and so if you want to go ahead and click on that. This is a form that we are required to use. Well, I shouldn't say we're required, we're strongly recommended that we use this format, but as we work on this plan and add to it through the course of the year, as a board, you can choose a format that's, that's more user-friendly. There are components that we have to include. If you can scroll to the metrics section, please. There is some information on our continuous improvement plan that we have to include, and that's some basic demographics, but what I do want to highlight is all the metrics in blue regarding SAT and ISAT, we're required by the State Board to report on. So, yes, math is a goal, but there's many other goals that, that as a board, as we work through the futures audit and our curriculum audit, you may decide that we need to work on, and so that's something we'd add to this plan. So, again, it's a shell of a plan. It includes basically SAT data and ISAT data, and that's all we have to include basically for compliance. So, I don't know if there's any questions on this section, but we do have Kate here is to talk about the K3 literacy plan, and then we have the third section, which is the college and career advising. So, you will see, it's not very robust. It's just a shell until we can get some things in place for the future. I don't know if there's any questions.
So, I think it's probably best that we take it in sections if we can. I think it makes the most sense to me, and I'm in charge, so that's what we'll go with.
Okay.
And, you know, just for our benefit, I, I think some of the stuff Dr. Cook alluded to there is, you know, there's, there's a number of things that the board and superintendent together are working on. We have our goal session coming up with Mick Fears and Jacobson later this week. We're looking at a new superintendent evaluation tool, and we've talked about lots of other things, whether it's a report card on our website, or data dashboard, I think is what we called it. You know, there's a number of things, and so the idea is, yeah, Dr. Cook's been here a few months. We've got a lot of initiatives that we've talked about, but it would be focusing those and tightening up this plan, and making it more of a living document that we access, and as we're in the board meeting and we're making decisions, we're going by what's on this document. I think in the past, that's not how this document's been used. It's been used primarily to meet a statutory requirement. State says you have to have one, and so we've had one, but it's usually kind of met the minimum state standards as far as what's on the document. So, keep that in mind. This is kind of more of maybe the same. This is meeting the statutory requirement as we evolve over the next few months, and, and work with Dr. Cook. We'll be fine-tuning this, and really setting the course of what this might look like in the future.
And then I did include, it's on page three of the document, or page 82 of your packet, information regarding the data summits that we did last year. I know in previous years when we, we presented this plan, there was a desire for the board to make sure that we're including the community, and those data summits really were just the beginning. We had the three of them, and then we, we weren't able to finish things, but the logical next step is, is the direction from the board as you work through things over the course of the year.
As we are fine-tuning it, that'll also be updated on our website, correct, so the community could access and see. Correct, and we would also have to send our updated copy to the State Board, so they would have access to that as well.
I had a general question, and we might have those in the audience, too. So, an LEA, a local educational agency, they set our benchmarks, is that correct?
We're, we're the LEA.
Are we the LA, so we're, so we have set like a 10% increase for SAT, that is a, I'm just looking at what are, we're setting for our goals for this year, and I was curious some reasoning behind the numbers, because they, like...
Basically, that's what we had on the plan before, and so I just transpose, transpose them on there, but I think as, as we work through this process, that's something that the board will probably want to talk about, is where would you like those benchmarks to be?
Yeah, I mean, it seemed to me, the 10% seemed like an awfully lofty goal, considering we had a little bit of a slide, so I thought, if we make this a document that we're going to stick to, let's have some realistic benchmarks, I guess was my thought process.
That's a good point.
I had the same comment, as you guys know, because there's, under the K3 lit plan, it actually has our benchmark lower than what our performance has been, and so, I know you guys have talked about that based on your response, and so I think we definitely need to be reevaluating those and making sure. I didn't know who the LEA was, so I got that answered at least.
Should we transition to that one, or would, or do you have more questions on this one?
Yeah, I have a question on this one, too, I guess. Go ahead, Lisa.
I just wanted to comment on what I've, I found to be the most disappointing number, because I'm good with honesty. I was disappointed at our go-on rate, and it dropped, let's see, 60, let's see, students who... Anyway, our, our... Actually, I might have jumped ahead to the career and college one, so I'll, I'll wait on that one. Chair Morris Rowe wants us to go in order, so I'll hold off.
Okay. Be less confusing that way, maybe. My only comment that I have on this particular document, I think Trustee May highlighted the 10% increase, but I just think that's really open to interpretation, and what is that, a 10% increase, and I would like to see us focus more on an end goal or a number. So, okay, we want, like, literacy, a few years ago, we've, earlier last year, we talked about 100%, and by third grade, we didn't put a timeline on it, but that's kind of our goal, so I'd like to see us move with a specific goal as opposed to a 10% increase, because I, I think it's just easier to interpret, for, for the community, for our staff, for us, what, what are we really looking to do?
And the template does require us to put an increase on there, but I think as we work through things, there may be a way where we can format and add a goal that's more specific, that probably addresses what you're talking about. Should we move to K3 literacy?
Can we, and I don't want to throw a wrench at you here, but in our packet, I think career, college and career advising was second, so can we do that?
Yes. Darn, she gets away. She's been so excited to present, so...
Well, it was kind of like a sandwich.
No, we'll end with you, that'll be good. Yeah, so the college and career advising piece follows that, and that starts in your packet on page 85. And so there's a lot of language in there. We basically have to explain to the State Board of Education what type of model that we're using. They had suggested certain models, for example, gear up and school counselor, and we're actually doing a hybrid model. We are employing, right now, we have three college and career advisors, but we also included in this plan an opportunity to build the capacity of our counseling model. And then again, the metrics that are shaded are ones that are required. Some of the metrics we calculate ourselves, and others we actually get from the State Department of Education. So, entertain any questions, and I did put lofty goals on this, too.
Yeah, and I, you know, just looking over all the data, and, you know, data can be hard to interpret, but the one that does seem very straightforward was our percent of students who go on to some form of post-secondary education within one year of high school graduation, and, you know, ours slid to 58.4, and I was curious nationally what it looks like, and I was really disappointed to see that nationally it's 66.7. So, I would like to see us, if we're going to have a realistic goal, get up to, you know, be on par with the nation, and if, whether it's through career counseling, or whatever focus, I know that's why we have these continuous improvement plans, but to me, that's something that should not be sliding, especially with the effort by the Albertson Foundation and the State Department of Ed. That's a number I think we should be able to at least stay onto the national norm.
And I would agree, especially now that we have college and career advisors, and that's one of the number-one areas that they're working. It is difficult that it's a year behind, so, but definitely that's an area. Something that is different, they changed the metrics on us. Originally, with the college and career advising plan, the State Board had, had us lump together AP classes, dual credit, and our CTE capstone completers, and so this year, they actually had us separate them out. So, I put some extra data in there, in there, so you could see some of the comparisons. So, it went from 42% to 47%, but the previous year, we didn't split them out, so we will have some new baseline right there for each one individually. And I know there's been an interest in increasing the number of students taking our AP courses, and increasing AP course options. It's a priority.
In the numbers on the, the one-year go-on, I, I remember us talking about sometimes how students go on a mission or whatnot. That's not taken into consideration, correct?
When they, when they calculate this, if, if they're actually not in school, they won't show up the first year, but I think they show up the following year. I don't know if Dr. Nelson, if you want to answer.
Sometimes I know they're two years, yeah. So, they would never show up in the numbers. So, I imagine, I wonder what those numbers look like. Okay.
We can start looking those. I know it affects, it impacts us, and, and there's, obviously Eastern Idaho really impacts them a lot more, but it would be helpful to know. And I'm sure we have other students that take a year off for different reasons.
So, I have a couple of questions or comments on this one, and some of them are from my parent hat, and I think just my own experience, and then some are just things I'm hearing from other parents that are either confused or frustrated, those sorts of things, with, you know, this particular offering. So, one is just on page 87 of our plan, and where it's talking about the ninth through 10th grade plan, and particularly the approved learning plan.
Yes. Yes.
That it be parent-approved. And I think we've talked about this. I know it's kind of a new process for us, but it seems to me that we are really struggling with that still, that a lot of parents are either unaware of these plans, how to approve them, are they approving them, are they actually, are we getting signed, and those sorts of things. So that's just something I'd like to see us focus on, and maybe we already are. But I think there's still some concern there, or at least I'm hearing some concern there.
There is some struggle there where, I think the struggle is, is that we would prefer that parents were able to get on career cruising and be able to actually approve the plan right there. We're having some difficulty with that, and we're working with career cruising on a solution. So what happened in the spring is there were letters mailed home to each parent. We had one school that didn't get the letters out until this fall. We had a change of staff member and it didn't happen. That was Lake City High School, so their letters didn't come out to this fall. And so parents had to go in and actually with their PIN login, and then we also scanned some approvals. So we definitely had some problems because we were trying to do paper, and we're working on to try and make it a little more seamless. And I don't know if, do you want to answer any questions?
I think, just in regard to that, so.
It's been a frustration.
That's one, and I highlighted this on mine, just because as a parent of a freshman, that was, I probably got it in the mail, but with eight thousand other things, and I do not recall getting it. We've never been into it in our own particular family, so I don't know if there's a way to have that information provided in Skyward, or, you know, just another way that families can access that so they're getting on there. You know, maybe that's something we start tracking is how much family login are we getting into the system?
Well, and one thing we've been talking with our college and career advisors is actually, instead of sending stuff out to parents, try to meet parents individually, or have some parent nights where we can actually show them how to log in, how to look up their student's plan, how to look at their portfolio. I think a lot of times we communicate through mail and email, and we're not necessarily really available in reaching some of those parents. So those are definitely things that we'll be working on this year.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's kind of something, it was a nice segue, that I wrote here, is just evidence. You know, there's a lot of great things in here, but where's the evidence that we're doing it? I think would be good, let's prove it to ourselves that we're doing these things. You know, there's information made available during August registrations and back-to-school nights. I'm not sure how well we did with that one. You know, getting parent signatures, those sorts of things. I think the plan, there's a lot of good stuff in the plan. I think its execution is maybe where we need to tighten up on some of this. So maybe if we can set some benchmarks for those sorts of things and figure out a way that that can be reported to you all, I think might improve the efficiency or the effectiveness of what we're trying to do there.
I would agree. And we have experienced quite a bit of turnover in that position. And so I think now we're in a good spot where I think that'll help too.
I also think some type of notification. We had a parent email, and then I actually asked the question, I thought, well, how often do students go in and update their portfolio? And it was messaged back to me that, you know, a couple of times a year. They meet up and I wonder, and I'm not sure if that's going on or not, not in my household, but I wondered if, when that does take place, if there could be some type of a notification, like, you know, just logged in, yeah, to the parent, like Kendall updated her portfolio, you know, profile, portfolio. I just think it's helpful in that sense, so then you see, oh, okay, they are doing this and meeting regularly, just for me as, like a parent hat, you know, we get notifications all the time and we tend to click on them when we see that type of communication, so.
That's a good idea. I think with the new apps that we have, I think that maybe is something that we can look at doing.
Yeah.
I had one more good idea, question. The percent of seniors completing the FAFSA through the December window?
Yes.
So that dropped again from last year, and I wonder if that kind of goes hand in hand with our go-on rate to some extent? If we're helping students fill these forms out, I know they can be complex. We're connecting them with scholarships or opportunities. Is there a plan in place to increase that number, or what do you think attributed to the?
Well, right now it's dropped because we're, that's, when I went and found the data, that only shows our FAFSA through July. So that will be updated in December. And we find that a lot of times the college and career advisors, the information gets started, and then they don't go back and finish some of the parent information. And then when it's, it has to be fully completed and submitted for it to count. So that number, we won't really have an accurate number because it'll be, the fifty and fifty five, excuse me, the fifty and fifty-four percent is a December window number, so we have more time. But it is definitely a struggle because we have lots of kids that don't complete it and don't realize that there's money out there.
So the next question on that was, I was looking at the budget for career and advising. So is my interpreting this spreadsheet correctly, we have three full-time positions for K through, or six through twelve?
Correct.
So those three counselors are advising all our middle schools and our two high schools.
So we have one at each high school, so we have one college and career advisor at Lake City and one at Corleone High School. And luckily, because we had an increase in our enrollment, we had a little bit more funding. And so we were able to hire one more to cover all three middle schools. Obviously, that's a big, you know, a big role. I would like to have one at each school. But we're kind of building the program. And then what we're looking at doing is starting her, her name's Dani Gray, with the eighth grade. And then, you know, start building down to seventh and sixth grade. But definitely, it would be wonderful if we could have one at each school.
And those are in addition to their traditional counselor?
Correct.
But what percent of the work is the traditional counselor doing compared to the career and college advisor? I mean, for some of these, you know, filling out the FAFSA and meeting regularly with students to make sure they're on track.
I think the difference is, is that our counselors really are overwhelmed. I mean, if you look at, especially at the high schools, it's four hundred to five hundred students per counselor. And so ideally, they would like to do these activities, but do they get to them? Sometimes they, before we had college and career advisors, they didn't. It was usually a student that's in crisis in whatever mode, you know, whatever happened that was more important, they would work towards that. So the nice thing, and I've been thankful for this funding, is because we've been able to afford the college and career advisors. And so they can actually focus on not just completing the FAFSA, but starting some of that educational piece when a student's younger. Because really, right now, in this day and age, a lot of our students should be in middle school, start thinking about what they want to do after high school. So that way, they're very thoughtful in what classes they take in high school to help them, you know, when they go beyond high school. One example is K-tech. We really should have more students taking advantage of K-tech. Well, if they don't learn about it in middle school, and we do have a design tech class, but that's just one class. But if they aren't thinking about things and exploring things, and when they get to high school, they may not necessarily have it in their schedule, or may not take a prerequisite that they may need for, you know, that K-tech class, or for an AP class, or for a dual-credit class. So what it's enabling us to do is do more and actually have those college and career advisors focus on that piece. And then it frees up our counselors where they can start helping those students that have more of those social, emotional needs. And then the two partner when it comes to the schedule. And our goal this next year is really to take that four-year plan, and that will be the course registration this spring.
On the previous matrix to what's up on the screen there, I think it's on page eighty-nine in our packet. You know, there is some tracking there of the learning plans. And I just will note here as a thought that we start tracking those that have parent approval. And I know we can see that numbers are drastically improved at eighth grade versus twelfth grade. And that's because of where we started the process, because it's new. I understand that. But I still think, you know, we're missing kind of that piece of it, and I'd like to see us start tracking that. And maybe we're tracking both, approve, you know, created and approved, you know, with parent approval.
Yep, and we can track that, we can track that in career cruising, and I think it's important too when we track it, that we probably put some sections where we can see that parents aren't just approving it once and then it's not being used. But like Tamara's idea, if there's a change, I think we need to make sure that the parent's aware of the change.
Yeah, because you're, as your students grow up and become more adultish, they're meeting with their counselors and stuff on their own. So half the time, you know, and thank goodness, I didn't have to like check up. And she would check up with us, and I would say, oh, we're not checking up on you. But sometimes you don't hear those things that they're, they've met and they've updated, or they do that because they are taking initiative and they go in and they do that, and you just have no idea. So I have no idea how that, what that looks like, but a notification would be amazing.
And then you can talk to your students and see if they're making the change for the right reason. Is it because they're friends in a course, or because they really need it?
My final comment that I'm going to make on this part is just about career cruising. I think it's an excellent tool, but it's only as good as the data that's put into it. It's only as good as the inputs. And so we have, you know, thirteen, fourteen-year-old hormonal middle school kids putting in information. And, you know, if they're not taking it serious, they could be putting in information and then making course decisions on that. And for instance, my daughter, who wants to go to a four-year college, wants to go to pre-med, had magician come up as one of her top choices, career choices. And my understanding is looking at career cruising is that there's a number of somewhat absurd jobs that can be swiped from the system, so they're not coming up. I think beekeeper is one I've heard. You know, yeah, just, you know, I just wonder if we have jobs in there that we shouldn't. And I'm not discounting any particular jobs. But if we have an eighth grader making career decisions and college choices based on wanting to be a magician, and I didn't know that, I would be upset. And I think we could just run into some troubles there, so. That's my understanding of career cruising, just with a real cursory look, but.
I think a lot of it too, it's not really, I mean, they have different matchmaker inventories and things like that. I think a lot of it's making sure that we're having them take the inventory that's more robust and not the shorter question that we have students do some of that often. That's one reason why we'd like to push things into the middle level, so we can be more intentional, have those college and career advisors in the classroom and do some of those other activities. But I agree, and I think a lot of that is implementation and not necessarily the program. And that's something that we need to get better at. And as you can see in here, we really started, because we started with only two at the high school level. The first year, we really only focused on those eighth-grade plans. And it was, we had some, you know, we had some bumps in the road and we had some successes. And I think that matchmaker assessment is one area that's been a concern. And so we may want to look at whether we're giving that assessment or give the one that's a little more detailed.
Any other questions on college and career? Okay.
Okay, K-three literacy.
Kate, it's yours.
So this is our K-three literacy plan.
Yes, good evening, Chair Morse Rowe. No, this is my first time. Members of the board and Superintendent Cook. Yep, I put together this, thank you for enlarging that, the literacy intervention program plan for our district with input from our cabinet. And just like Trina was saying, it's a skeleton. And I'm really excited to fill in the meat on this guy. It feels different to me. This is the first time I've been able to work on this. Just that you front-load a bunch of ideas and then you really work with people to flesh them out over time. From the notes that I've seen of this process last year, there's a lot to look forward to. There's been some reflection based on the implementation of last year's plan that I tried to reflect in this. But a lot of it is in the spirit of the previous plan. One thing that is different this year right off the bat was that the, in the metrics, they allotted for an extra fifty dollars per student who scored a one or a two. And so that bumped up our total in ways that we're pretty excited about. But I captured that in some of the same categories as the previous plan.
Okay, questions on this plan? You're not going to get off that easy, are you? Is this a repeat of last year's plan, so to speak, with some tweaks, or is this ground up?
This, what we've submitted is really similar to what we submitted last year with some, like I said, with the extra money. We allotted it in different places, but I don't think it will all come out the same. For example, one is the Corleone, the summer reads program that was popular and had some good attendance last summer. We've been looking at that data and been really reflective with Spencer and the people who organized that and showed up every, twice a week all summer long, got their feedback. And it's just that initial feedback, right after summer was over, we captured those in notes. But we have a lot where we see opportunities to better target kids that would benefit from that. If our goal is to really get kids there that suffer most from summer slide, we need to brainstorm some different strategies for that. And so the money is adjusted a little bit differently already. We know that we're going to do more with busing to try and reach different neighborhoods and get closer to them so that they don't have to be driven. Stuff like that has been reflected in here, but until we go through the menu items for each building and what worked last year, and I haven't been able to have those conversations this year, I just have the notes as things unfolded last year. So that'll be along with our goals, and that Superintendent Cook shares with us, and the movement that we make toward those, these things will come together.
I have a question, is that's all right? Um, I was looking at the budget, so the funds that you get for the literacy intervention plan, the four hundred, roughly a thousand dollars, is that title monies or are those actually state monies?
State. It's a separate bill that they put together, so.
So this is new funding for us this year, is that?
It was here last year too. It's just not title.
Okay, it's just not title. So I had a question about the P E B C. So we're sending fifteen ninety teachers this year, we'll get to go, Kate might be able to help, will just get to go down to Denver for training, is that correct?
Yeah, and so that category was there last year. The only change I made to it this year was, and so it's only the K-three teachers, but we added administrators into that. Has to, yeah, it has to be directly impacting K-three.
Okay. And then, so roughly what percent of our teachers now have, because we've been doing this for a third year, I was just curious, what percent of our teachers have actually gone to this training? This is our third year, right?
Honestly, I'm trying to remember if this is our third year or our second year of sending teachers. And I'm looking.
Third year.
Third year. See, they know over there. So if we do the math, a large school would send seven teachers, five of which would be K-three, and would do that three times, so three years. So it's really just sort of doing the math, and I could go scribble that out for you real quick.
Is it something that you see that we would need to do, you know, to get a full training? Is you trained every teacher K through three, or is it you train a certain number at a school, and then they do future trainings for their school, I guess, is my question.
I know we're gonna, I think the intention was that we'd spend some time maybe in a workshop or something even talking about that. But I can tell you that some of our hero stories come from teachers whose classrooms have changed dramatically and have not gone to Denver, but have learned from their colleagues. So that can be part of our discussion.
I can speak as kind of, not an outsider, because now I'm an insider, but as a newbie, because I've had a lot of those questions too, and so I ask them with my, when I'm visiting teachers and talking with principals at the administrator meeting. And I have this sense that, and you can help me, but it feels like there's kind of a critical mass when you talk about, I'm not asking about thinking strategies, I'm not asking about Denver, but it's in people's goals, it's in the PD plans that they're making for the year. And so I don't, having not been here before, I don't know if those kinds of conversations were taking place. But I get that sense that we're really reaching an important part, an important place in moving forward with these strategies.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
So if you think about this, this is, because of the nature of the funding and the nature of the goals, this is hyper-focused at early learning. So a lot of teachers in kindergarten through early elementary are getting the focus. And so the, when you speak to critical mass, I'm hearing from the opposite side is, hey, secondary, why can't we get some money on this? What's going on? They're doing all these things and they're getting good results, and they're seeing a reinvigoration. They're doing all these things and they're getting good results and they're seeing a reinvigoration. And that's, to me, is as exciting as the energy that's happening in the lower grades. And so what I'm hopeful for is in a, uh, an increased competition for resources because the energy is there to move that needle at both the secondary and the elementary school. So, um, it, it, who knows? It might not bode well for the Kate and Kate Show if we have to start spending money at the secondary level as well too, so.
I was a secondary teacher before I took this job, so I'm okay with that.
I've got a couple of questions here. Some of it's just kind of formatting, but I, I was a little confused, and this is moving up more in the narrative portion, page one and page two of this particular document. Um, and maybe you can just tell me if I'm interpreting this correctly. But the first part, it looks like it's kind of a summary of the previous year.
Mm-hmm.
And so there's a couple of bullets there, one, two, and three. And then as we go... See, I'm trying to compare it to what's there. Where am I at from that? This is.
I'm not controlling this.
Uh, this is page ninety-seven of our packet. I'm not sure. Oh, it's page six, sorry, uh, of the plane.
Okay, here we go.
So that looks like it's a summary of last year's program.
Mm-hmm.
And I assume this is kind of the state, um, template, is that correct?
Yes.
So then on the next page, like I said, this is just kind of a formatting thing, but it confused me for a half an hour on the airplane yesterday.
Oh, no.
Um, is that it's, the bullets are four, five, and six, so I thought, I, I just wasn't sure if the two went together, but I think I figured it out eventually.
Oh.
Roggy on the plane. Um, so I just wanted to point that out to you.
Thank you.
So you were aware. Um, and then still may be a formatting thing, and this would be down on page nine of this document, page one hundred of our packet. Um, at the bottom, it's just talking about the summer reading and this, uh, intervention program. And it's referring to the two thousand eighteen program.
Oh, thanks, yes, and so.
Just completed, and kind of what we did in the past and not what we plan to do next year.
Right, that's changing this year. Um, but we haven't had any conversations to really organize that, and so I left the information from last year. But I can, I can modify that.
Okay. And then I think my next question here, and I, I think I heard Mrs. Brumley get to this earlier, I don't want to steal her thunder, but was on, when we got into the matrix, and this is down much further, maybe page fourteen. But the marks are significantly less than what we've.
Yeah.
Performed, and I assume that has to do with the new I-ready test or what, the new version of the, the, um.
So you're looking at the, um, the slight increase in kids that scored.
This is on matrix.
Are we looking at the benchmark, or are we looking at the?
So this is performance matrix.
Here we go.
Uh, right there.
So like in kindergarten and first grade?
So I see, if I'm reading this correctly, we were eighty-eight percent, then last year we were eighty-four, and we've set a goal of sixty?
Yeah, um, and I, I touched on that with Mike a little bit, and he said, do you want to explore that right now? So it will definitely be something that we look into. Um, we have, even if you go back further, we've, we've surpassed it. Um, those are the, the sixty, seventy, eighty, and eighty-five, those are the benchmarks that the state set. And so for the purpose of submitting this, um, the matrix for here, I didn't change those from previous years that we've submitted. But it's, um, as I think I shared with Jen, it's, I mean, our goal is to get a hundred percent. And so what's on here isn't reflecting, um, reflective of where we sort of hang our hat on things, but, um, we can, we can have that discussion with a little bit more time.
I, I guess my thought on that, and I don't know what your thought is, Dr. Cook, but, um, this is a public document, and this is certainly what the state's looking at, and this is, uh, available on our website. And I think if, I think we should have our own goals reflective there and not the state minimum of sixty percent, because I don't think that's acceptable to any of us or any of you or any of our teachers. So, um, I, I think let's set the bar where we want to set the bar, I guess would be my opinion on that. And that just doesn't pass the smell test, I guess, to me on that, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. Is that what you were gonna say, Ms. Brumley?
Yes, and that's why when we defined LEA earlier, I thought we had said that, because we defined the LEAs ourselves.
Right. No, 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 we, we accepted the state's benchmarking, so we kind of did. I mean, I'll still take that ownership, but it's definitely up for, we can visit that and make that more reflective.
That was just what I was.
Especially the kindergarten one, we kind of blow that one out of the water.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why it's set at sixty. For what it's worth, it should be, from my perspective, ninety, eighty, eighty at a minimum, sitting there with the numbers that we have. There's no reason we shouldn't be looking to improve them.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is with the change in assessment, we have kind of this moving target. We're not sure where it's gonna be, but we're glad, we would agree, that we want great expectations for our kids. So philosophically, I think we're in complete alignment. I think we can do, do that for the next go-around.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons that we'd like to ask for draft approval with this. Doctor Roscoe is gi- giving me the I wanna talk wink.
Like that? I just wanted to, I'm, we're in complete agreement that we want a, we want a goal up there that reflects effort towards getting every single one of our kids proficient. We, uh, it was two years ago that, um, and our board members remember this, that we actually set a goal for ourselves for a hundred percent proficiency, K three. So, um, it, it matters, it, it shouldn't, but it matters little to us compared to this real significant, purposeful goal to make every single one of our kids proficient. And that's hard work, and we're working on that. So I wanted to just share that. And we aren't sure about that, the proficiency. Um, we believe that our kids may be proficient readers, and we might not know that with the new I R I yet, until they get proficient with the new I R I. So, um, so, so that, that scares us a little bit, because, uh, uh, we have administrators in the room who will tell you that it's a very different test than the old I R I. And our kids have to know how to navigate the technology to do well. And, uh, we're working on it, um, but it's brand-new for all of us, so.
Doctor Roscoe, I had one question on that too. I guess, um, the last performance metric, it's the LEA for the third grade, um, I sat. And our results were sixty-one, but we set our metric at sixty-five, and even though we know we've set it to be a hundred percent, so shouldn't that potentially be a hundred percent or something much higher than sixty-five percent?
Yeah. Yeah, um, and maybe that'll be something that we talk about in a workshop, like you said. But I, I think, um, there isn't a single teacher that would say of you twenty kids, I'd like all but four of you to not be proficient. You're gonna want every single one of their kids, and that's what we all want. And Doctor Cook mentioned that. So whether we say four percent greater or forty-three percent greater, we know what our goal is, because we owe it to the kids. We don't owe it to some numbers up there. Our kids deserve a hundred percent proficiency.
Oh, I totally agree. I just, I thought sixty-five seemed a little bit, I, I thought we could aim for a little bit higher than that.
I agree.
At least if this was our public living document.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
And this, I just, after looking at this, it says that we only, we have to have at least one metric for that last performance metric, but we can have several others. And I know we've talked about, uh, what does achievement look like? And I thought that might be a place that we could add in a metric that's not just solely a single summative test indicator. And, you know, I would like to see something else there, whether it's the love of reading or some sort of assessment. It'd be great to add it there or something.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're dragging behind here a little bit, but we need to take a break. The booth's having some difficulties, we're getting some mic feedback and some stuff. So why don't we take a five-minute break? We'll let them come out and just look at our mics and see if they can figure out what's going on. And we'll get going here at seven twenty-five. Oh, folks, hang on here, real quick, hang on. Sorry, thank you, Doctor Cook. This was an action item. Um, in Miss Town, I don't believe I saw a motion in there, so, uh, is there a motion to approve our continuous improvement plan as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna take a five-minute recess, we're still gonna try to get back at seven twenty-five.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. We're still gonna try to get back at 7:25. Thank you for bearing with us there while we work out our technical difficulties. So, back on to our agenda, we are at item F, which is policy for action. There was three policies we looked at last month. 1210, 8140P, and 8605. Those were out for comments, and according to page 110 of our packet, it looks like no comments were received on any of those. So, why don't we chew these off individually? Because I believe, Mr. Hearn, you have a comment on one of the policies. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, why don't we start with 1210? And, go ahead.
The comment I wanted to make on this one was, I'd like to see us add a line that says that no board member may serve as chair for more than two consecutive terms. And this is not, let me be very clear, this is not directed at our current chair, who's done an excellent job. It's certainly not, I don't have a great interest in being a chair, and I may even turn it down if nominated. Probably would, I think. But I do think that, for the good of the board, leadership should change on a regular basis. I prefer to see it changed every year, but, because I just think it's good for the board to have a change in leadership. But, at the very least, I'd like to see us put a line in there that it should change at least every two years. So, that's my, so, again, the change would be no board member may serve as chair for more than two consecutive terms. Doesn't mean that there couldn't be a break there, and then they serve again for two consecutive terms. I just feel like the board leadership should change. I'd like to see everybody here be in the board leadership position. And I'm uncomfortable when we have chairs for more than a couple of years. And again, I want to be very clear, this is not directed at our current chair. He's done a great job. It's really not. It's something I've actually talked about for, I've talked about this before. And I just, now that this was up on the, our agenda, it triggered my cloudy memory to look at this issue again. So, that's what I'd like to see changed, and see what kind of discussion we have on this.
So, real quick, Ms. Towne, so this was for information last month. This would be an edit here, kind of at the action stage. If the board's so inclined to add this edit, would we be putting it back out for information again?
We could add this at a red line to the policy. If you choose to approve what's been suggested as revisions for this evening, that's been out for 30 days, come back next month with a red line, suggested change of Mr. Hearn's, and bring it to you for information next month, out for 30 days, back for action. That would be my suggested process.
So...
I apologize for not bringing this up earlier. I sent you an email to that affecting Ms. Towne today. I had forgotten about it until I was reading the board book, and I remembered that, oh my God, I need to deal with this issue. So, but this is something I've thought about and talked about with other board members and other superintendents in the past. So, it's just my opinion. I'm really interested to hear what other board members have to say.
So, I'm gonna save my comments for last. Why don't you guys go?
I would like to just keep it as it is. I don't want to put a time limit on someone's willingness to serve as board chair. And as we've seen the last couple of years, two and a half years almost, I've been very grateful that we've had the same board chair with the transitions that have taken place. We've had an interim superintendent at the end of a school year, transitioning to an interim search for a school year, transitioning to our nationwide search of a superintendent, followed by a superintendent. So, I think the one thing that has kept us steady and rock solid has been the fact that we've had the same board chair. Personally, I think, and as I've viewed that, I would hate to limit, put a limit on someone's willingness or ability. I think that, you know, if something were to occur and go, hey, why are we have a year? And every year, we can elect, you know, a new board chair, whoever wanted to step up would have the ability. But I would hate to say, I'm sorry, you've done two years, and your time is up. But I haven't been board chair, so maybe Casey would like that in there. So, anyways, that's just my opinion. I've enjoyed the consistency of a board chair. And we've transitioned as a board as well. Lots of different things that have taken place the last, what, two and a half years or so. That's just my opinion.
Well, being the new kid on the block, I haven't experienced what Tamara did. And I guess my initial reaction is to not limit it either. Just, and so I'd be interested in more from you, Tom, just in terms of what's the benefits? I see the benefits of the openness of being able to have that happen or not have that happen, as opposed to being forced into a situation that you're a really great person that wants to continue doing that, and his work's really well, and they can't. So, that's where I'm struggling with. How do you outweigh that benefit?
Basically, my thoughts were just along the lines of term limits, if you want to be honest. And also, it has to do with, that I think that the board is good when leadership changes. You know, I think, it's not, I do agree with Tamara that it's been very helpful to have Casey in that position the last couple of years with all the changes of superintendent, so I agree. But I also think that it's, I get concerned that I think we should be changing the leadership. I think we should be changing the leadership of the board on a fairly regular basis. I think it's better for the board. It gives everybody an opportunity to be in a leadership position. It just, that's my thoughts. I mean, I don't, I know of some boards where they do change every year. Other boards where they have to extend a period of time, but I get concerned about the ones where there's extended period of time. I think it, or tends to, you know, since I've been on the board, there's been basically three chairs. I was chair for a year. Chris Hazel was chair for two years. Casey's been chair for two years. I like the change, frankly. Each of us has our different leadership style. Each of us has a different, you know, and positives and negatives with those, but I just think it's good for the board. So, that's where I'm coming from. If the rest of the board doesn't agree, that's fine. But I just feel like we should be doing that.
You know, I appreciate, Tom, you bringing this to our, you know, attention to discuss. You know, I don't feel compelled to change our policy either on this. I think there's a lot of data that suggests that consistency with a board chair is beneficial for a board. I think there's always room to improve our own board governance and flow of information. But I think that we have elections every year for a reason, and I'm comfortable that if there is somebody on this board who wishes to be chair, they would come forward, and that we would never have an atmosphere that would prevent any one person from seeking a leadership role. And really, you know, running a meeting is a difficult position to be in, and it might not be right for every person who wants to be a trustee. And so, I wouldn't want anybody to be dissuaded from running for a position because they would have to be in that role. But I hear what you're saying, and I think it's good to think about. But I'm comfortable with it as it is for now.
Okay. Tamara, thank you for the nice comments. I'm gonna agree, not because I want to continue being chair. I think the beauty of the chair position, I think, is it's self-term limits. You can only do it for so long. And for each person, I think that's gonna be a little different. To me, Tom, I appreciate the suggestion, but I think it's a little bit a solution looking for a problem, in that I just don't see where there is an issue that chair position is a one-year position that's elected every year. And certainly, if it's the board's wishes to change the chair position, that's available, because that's the system we have right now. So, I would not support the edit either. And I'm pretty sure, that's what we heard across the board, other than you, Tom. I appreciate the suggestion. I just don't see the need, so.
Well, we don't agree. But I want to, again, to say for the record, this is not personally you, Casey. Really isn't. I know you've said, you said last July that she didn't want to be chair again after January, right?
I have said that.
You wanted to take a break, so I understand. But I just think that, anyway, I've stated my reasons.
We have some time to change his mind.
So, all right. So, the policies in front of us, 1210, it was out for comment for 30 days. Trustee Hearn's made a suggested edit here. He didn't do it in a motion, but it doesn't sound like there's a second there or any support for that. So, is there a motion to approve 1210 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries, Ms. Towne. All right. Next up is 8140P. And this was a policy regarding student bus safety, and we added the words for the buckles, for the seatbelt buckle. So, no comment on this policy. As their motion to approve 8140P is presented.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. And the last one for action tonight is 4605, non-instructional operations. This was in regards to public records custodians and some changes in the language there. No comments received on this one also. Is there a motion to approve 8605 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. Thank you. Okay. We are on to information items. And I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Cook here. The first item G is new elementary site option updates. So, this is on our various sites.
So, if you recall, in the July board meeting, my first day, I might add, we were tasked with bringing back information on getting both sites to build, to the point of build. What would it look like, and what would it take? We cannot present on a final option of that tonight, but we can bring you kind of some updates on both sites. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about the Prairie site and the soft costs associated with that, some of the items that were expected to mitigate in that site. And then, we're gonna do the same thing with the current Nexa site. I do want to qualify, we've had a couple of questions, and this goes back, I think, historically, for quite some time. The original proposal, when it was presented to architects and the engineers, was for a site to hold Nexa Elementary School. So, this, some of the documents that were released for this particular conversation, I think, for example, the traffic impact study references the Nexa traffic impact study. That was not done at Hayden Lakes site, at the current site of the Nexa Elementary School. That was actually done at the Prairie site. So, there's a little bit of confusion that isn't predicated on Nexa staff or students moving out of their current building or into another building. It just got named that when it was tasked as part of the assignment. And because it's kind of, that kind of stuck with just regards to the process of finding wherever this may land, this next school may land, and under what circumstances with Nexa Elementary or not with Nexa Elementary students being in one of those sites or other, at this point is completely conjecture. So, just as a kind of preface to that, I'd like to ask that Jeff Voler and Megan O'Dowd kind of take this away and kind of give you some of the updates that have happened in the last, gosh, it's been about 90 days, right? Today's the first, right? So, we've got three months of updates to give you on both sites. Thank you.
Yes. Well, good evening, Superintendent, Chairman Morris Rowe, Superintendent Cook, esteemed members of the board. As Superintendent Cook said, tonight, we want to share with you the updates on the two different properties. And I'm gonna speak tonight to you about the Prairie site. You'll see on this slide, just kind of to review, it's located on Prairie Avenue, just to the west of Ramsey Road, to the east of what is currently known as the hospice house. So, you can see it located there. It's made up of three different properties. It's 7.18 acres. Just to kind of give you a reference of that property again, of where we're talking. Part of this, this is a unique property. It is currently in the county, and a lot of the property around has already been annexed into the city. So, part of the project was to get this annexed into the city. And we have gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Coeur d'Alene. We did that on September 11th. The city requested that we apply for this as an R8 zoning to be consistent with the surrounding developments. And subsequently, we also presented with the annexation request, a special use permit. We were able to do those simultaneously. So, the planning and zoning heard that, and they approved that. So, we're now able to move forward to be heard by the city council on November 6th. That's tentatively when we're scheduled to present that. This slide will just kind of show, again, in the blue there, that shows our property, showing around what we have there. We have the Vista Meadows subdivision that is gonna go in there. It looks like that's pretty hard to read as I see this from here. The arrow off of Vista Meadows that's kind of going up at an angle says Phase 1. In that area right there, there's proposed to be 12 units of the first phase of their subdivision. That total subdivision is 15 acres, and those 12 units are currently in permitting right now with the city. That's already been annexed, and that is an R8. To the south, you see Coeur d'Alene Place under a PUD. And that is, so planned unit development, approximately maybe 400 units could be plotted in there, but there's no timeframe for when that will happen. And then, the Phase 2, which is the arrow directly to the left of where it says Vista Meadows, there could be 98 potential units going in there as well. Again, no timeframe for that second phase of the Vista Meadows development. So, a couple advantages to the Vista Meadows going in, there, the vertical line against that narrow slot is a road that's gonna be called Mozzell. And with Vista Meadows, we'll put Mozzell in. And with that will come the sewer to service those properties, and we can tie into that sewer. So, that'll give us the access for the sewer that we need to that property. And then Cedar View is kind of the bottom of that T on that narrow strip there. And that would give us access going into the district property. Lake's Highway District has requested that we don't have immediate access off of Prairie, so that the main access to that property will come in off of Mozzell and Cedar View to access the property. And you can, I'll show you that on a site plan here in a second slide. So, the advantage is it gives us some working relationship with the Vista Meadows of sharing some infrastructure that could go in on this project. So, this is a site plan of that proposed location. You'll see Prairie to the north there. Mozzell would be the new road going in by Vista Meadows, and then Cedar View that would access our property. There'd be a bike trail to the north, and potential, what we're hoping for is a service access coming off of Prairie, but that will be pending Lake's Highway approval, which will be coming up, and I'll talk about that here in just a minute. So, things that have happened, part of this plan was to have a traffic impact study completed. JUB Engineering has completed that, and I think the main finding in that is, as you study that, they were looking at traffic studies, and that report is in your board packet, and I know that was a lengthy document. But I think if you focus on kind of the first 10 to 12 pages of that, it really kind of has the meat of that document. And the rest of it is just stats of, you know, cars passing across Prairie and studies that they did. And, you know, it's really just engineering term that doesn't matter a whole lot for this property and what we're looking at. But in looking at that, there was, basically, it showed a 50-50 split. They assessed both of the Vista Meadows and considered that for its full development, with the 110 units that that development could contain, and then the school going in on that site. And they basically is looking at the number of trips per day noted that there would be just about evenly a 50-50 split for that. It did warrant a traffic light, so the request of that study would be to put a traffic light in on Prairie and Mozzell to control access coming into Mozzell and into both that subdivision and the school. The second thing is Hayden Lakes Irrigation District. We need to provide a will-serv letter for water. We have a conditional will-serv letter right now. That is going before their board tomorrow evening. So, we expect that will-serv letter to be issued just immediately after their board meeting tomorrow night. Lake's Highway District has the site plan and the traffic impact statement and our information, and they will be reviewing that. We've been to a couple of their different board meetings as well to present our preliminary information. They've written us a letter with a couple of questions that they've had, and we've mitigated some of those on the site plan that you just saw previously. And so, we expect that to go before their commissioners on November 5th. Though, currently, there's three houses on those three lots, and those have all been sold at auction. Those houses will be moved by the buyers by the end of, until the end of January to get those moved off. And then, again, just to reiterate, the city of Coeur d'Alene has approved our, by Planning and Zoning, and it will go to a hearing to the city council on November 6th. So, that is what's been happening on that property, and I will stand for any questions regarding the Prairie property.
So, that was good news, that Vista Meadows will be paying for the, all of the road improvements for Mozzell? Is that, did I hear that right?
Yeah. So, they will be, you know, putting in the infrastructure of the road. There's some talks of some shared costs potentially on that, and potentially some shared costs with the traffic light as well.
Would be sharing costs of the traffic light, not the full cost of it.
We've had discussions about sharing costs and no agreements have been reached.
What do you anticipate on that as far as the timeline for continuing those discussions? And, um, getting something from there? I know we, we had an agreement that I don't think's been signed, but some sharing, cost sharing agreement on the sewer side. So, um, I assume we're working, or hoping to, to put some together on the light as well?
Yep, correct. So we are in talks currently on those. Um, in fact, I reached out to, uh, those owners today to schedule a meeting for first of next week, when the engineer's back in town, that we can sit down again at the table and revisit this and talk it through one more time.
All right, so Dr. Cook, I know at one point, I think we kicked this out sixty days and then we extended it again. So we could have, uh, this hard data. So it looks like just looking at Prairie, and I, I know, I, I think we're gonna hear about Hayden, Hayden Lake site here in a moment. But on Prairie, um, we're November sixth or seventh, somewhere around there, before we'd have all those government entities. So are, are we looking to move towards a decision sometime soon after that?
Yeah, I think, um, it, we're anticipating that in November, we should be able to have both of these things kinda run to ground. One thing I would add that I think we, uh, it may be a detail that is under consideration or, or not. But I do wanna add that the, the, the proposed stoplight at Hayden, at the Prairie site is actually, uh, closer than the recommended distance for sites, which is for our lights, which is thirteen hundred feet, I think, is the minimum.
I, I believe so, and it runs around nine hundred feet between, and you're referencing off of Ramsey Road.
So there's additional costs that we're, we would have to incur for that particular light to tag into the light that's at the corner of Ramsey and Prairie. So we would have to coordinate so that those two lights and, and, so there's been a little bit of a delay in that conversation with Lakes Highway District about what that would look like. Um, but we are confident we would have all that data back and ready to make a decision by the, uh, by November. Uh, now, whether or not it's by the November first, or the, or the November board meeting, or later in the month, we would, that's, that's gonna be give or take, so.
I was just looking, I think our November monthly meeting is the fifth. The city council meets the day after us, unfortunately.
Correct, and I think Lakes Highway meets at the exact same time.
Yeah, so we'll, it won't be at our November board meeting.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions on Prairie site? And then if not, we'll move on to the, uh, current Nexa site.
I can't see, I didn't understand the hundred and forty-five pages of the traffic study.
You didn't have fun with that?
No.
I just gave up after a few pages.
Yeah, I mean, really pay attention to the first, like, twelve pages. That's really got the meat of the summary of what that traffic impact is saying. The rest of it is just supporting information, and that's all the engineering data that they have to provide in that study.
Good evening, trustee Superintendent Cook. I am presenting on behalf of the Hayden Building Site. And, um, I expect it more to be just an update and a refresher more than new information. But certainly ask if you have any questions along the way. And in your packet, you should've seen copies of some documents. We tried to give more aerials in this presentation, 'cause I think this, this site is all about the visual, both before and after. So, this is our existing site in blue. Um, we have just under five and a half acres. It's zoned in the central business district. Um, the, working with council for the city of Hayden, they have recognized that there is an existing, um, community education use. So there would be no requirement for a special use permit like what we're dealing with on the Prairie site. You see directly to the north, there is a, is an almost two acre piece owned by the city of Hayden, also zoned central business district and, and used for parking. So these are our existing sites. And here's what we have talked about doing over the last eight or nine months. Is to, um, basically three steps. One, subdivide the, um, existing school site parcel. So we would have two, two pieces. One, which is highlighted there in the kind of the bottom, um, left corner. It would be about one and a half acres by the time it was subdivided. And we were calling that the existing school site. And then we would have the remaining about four acres, which would be the, the rest of the school site. After the subdivision process, we, um, would swap the existing school site for the Hayden Lake site. And then we would lease back the existing school site. This is at least what's been discussed in the memorandum so far. While we build the, um, new elementary school, which we anticipated taking about a year. And then at the end of the lease, we would give, I mean, essentially the city would then take over in fee of the existing, existing school site. So, so that's the big picture view. This is the subdivision, and unfortunately, it was, um, twisted. But, um, this is the actual plat. So J U B has been retained through Architects West to create the minor plat application. This is the proposed plat. I'm sorry that it's showing up this way. But, um, if we, if we were to have shifted this vertically, the, the bottom left corner actually shows the, and this is in your packet as well, but would show what the proposed existing school site would look like, the remaining school site, and then there's the parcel to the north by the city. There's also, uh, you see an alignment, and this is discussed in further detail in your board packet. But there's, the dash lines there represent a sewer easement. Um, the city of Hayden does have an easement to run sewer through the existing school site. So as part of this would be realignment of that sewer location and redoing that easement. So, the memorandum of understanding is where we stopped in July, essentially. And just to kind of recap, that is included in your board packet and gives a more detailed description of what has been conceptualized for this process. Man, I have a hard time reading that too. But es- essentially, um, the city of Hayden approved this. There's, they went to city council late June, and it was approved by City of Hayden City Council. Um, our, our board voted to table it at its July two meeting. And, um, I was at that meeting too, and I did advise, it is not a legal requirement by any means to do the M O U. It is kind of a big picture, um, site plan, if you will, of steps that we all have to go to, 'cause it is such a detailed process. So even though it's not required in our discussions that we've had since that meeting, the city of Hayden would still like to see it executed if the board decides that they wanna see, um, development happen like this at the Hayden site. Just because there are so many pieces involved here, it helps both entities, I think, understand what the steps are that we all expect to happen to get to the end of the road. So I think, um, that's still the direction we should, that the board should consider going, um, should they choose the Hayden site for this development. And so we included one, another layout there that kind of shows another way of showing after the land swap, that kind of shaded parcel is what the district would be owning and developing. I have a, a small bullet, there has been some discussion about a boundary line adjustment. I, I don't, those, those never came to fruition. Like, they did come up again over the last several months as a potential option. I don't think that that's going to be the ultimate route of how this goes. I do think it will be subdivided, minor plat, land swap, lease back. But I've just included that because there have been discussions of that.
May I ask you a quick question on that map? What is to the right of that purple line on the right border? How come it doesn't extend all the way to the road? Is that not our current land, or is that?
Are we talking in, like, the northwest corner, the, the top left corner, or the bottom left?
The bottom.
The bottom left corner would be what the ci, that's the, that is our existing school site. But after the swap, that would be owned by the city of Hayden.
But for what?
Oh, I'm sorry, the right side? That's us, that, we don't own that and we never have. It's kind of a goofy parcel. That is an irrigation, um, the local irrigation district owns that piece. I wish I had a red laser, I'd make sure.
Yeah, that kinda big square building and the two skinnier ones that, from the area, almost look like mobile homes. They're not, but, um, that's Hayden Lake Irrigation, Avondale Irrigation, one of those.
Oh.
Um, and that's their offices in the front and their shop in the back.
Okay, there. That piece is, is owned by the irrigation district, yeah. Is that what, trustee may say what you're asking, okay. So, um, this is the site plan that has been proposed by Architects West. It has not changed since March. Um, it, so it still has access off of Hayden Avenue. So, so, the southern, um, road access, government ways, is reserved basically for a service entrance, but not primary, um, access for patrons. And that's, that's it. I, I did wanna say, in terms of what has changed, nothing has changed. We have an M O U that's been approved by the city council of Hayden, and it's still pending, um, you know, here, before this board. The plat application has not been finalized. Um, it could be, that's, it's basically a two-week process. And so if the board were inclined, that's kind of when that trigger would be pulled. The, the city of Hayden, in these discussions over these last months, has expressed still some concern about the amount of parking that may be currently, um, if we go back, um, how much of the parking area north of the existing site they may need or want. Um, but it is, it is a quick process. The minor plat application process takes about two weeks to go through the director, the planning director has the discretion to approve that without it going to city council or anything like that. So it's a relatively quick process once we know for sure which direction it's headed. Um, and they also have had some changes, some pretty big changes within their planning department. They, they, they lost their planning director, they're getting a new planning director. So there's been a lot of just changes on their end as well. But I think at the end of the day, the, the city of Hayden, at least through my discussions, is looking for, um, that memorandum of understanding so that they, we can plow forward one direction or the other. The documents that we would need to draft, um, for example, the land exchange agreement, I think those were tentatively, had been drafted by the city of Hayden's council. And I think those were kind of told, they were told to kind of put those on hold until further direction. I don't think that they wanted to spend those funds until they were sure. We had started putting together a, a draft lease and that together. So all these things could still come together relatively quick, but once the board makes a final decision.
Okay, any questions for Ms. O'Dowd on the Hayden Lake?
I don't have questions. I just wanted to say thank you for the visuals, 'cause I was asking for those earlier today, 'cause I had no idea what we were doing and what was the swap. So, I appreciate it very much.
If we, if we do the M O U, is it good for a certain period of time, or we can just? I guess what I'm thinking is, you know, we're gonna have to make a decision. This board has been struggling with this issue for months, years maybe, but certainly months. Uh, we're, um, so proving the M O U means we're moving forward on Hayden. It's not something that you could, like, prove it and then say, well, we'll deal with this issue later, right, that kinda thing?
Yeah, I think the board, the, the M O U, the terms of the M O U require the board to move forward in good faith to, to meet each of the steps outlined in the M O U. So we need to move in good faith to subdivide. We need to move in good faith to finish drafting the land exchange agreement, to draft the lease document. So, my recommendation certainly would be if the board is not committed to that site, that it would not be an appropriate thing to approve the, the M O U.
So if we go, so if we end up approving Prairie, then we just, and, and at some later date, I'm just, just conjecture, I'm not, you know, say a few years down the road, we said, okay, now we wanna build on Hayden. We'd have to go through this, another M O U and the whole process again.
Well, it depends. I mean, I think it depends on what we had planned to do. Remember, I mean, the M O U is not required. If the board decided that there was a way to build on the site without doing the swap, that is what complicated, it makes this such a unique and, and more challenging process. And I, I would, I would also say that the M O U had timeframes in it that have already somewhat lapsed. So even if this board were to say, yes, you know, we're gonna meet in November and we wanna move forward on the M O U, we would need to do an addendum to update, 'cause there were timeframes, which, one of which was a September deadline for the land exchange. So, we, we would, I mean, in, the, the M O U is not binding right now, 'cause it's not been fully executed by the parties. You know, the district doesn't have to do anything and it just dies on a vine.
Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Dowd. Anything further on that, Dr. Cook?
Yeah, if we become the proud owners of a stoplight, I'd like us to say, instead of having red, yellow, green, just round lights, I'd like it to say, please vote yes. Just a thought.
That's good. Okay, so next up is, uh, the Math One program update. And I believe this will be Dr. Cottle? Maybe Dr. Cook?
Yeah.
Is that right? And board members, this starts on page, uh, two eighty-three of our packet. That traffic study was a long document. Um, so we, we jumped a bunch of pages there.
So let's.
Two eighty-three, if you're looking for it.
Let's, let's tee this up a little bit. If you recall, uh, the board approved the implementation of Math One for this school year with some pretty significant criteria, um, on reporting out, eh, on the implementation and the execution of the, uh, startup of the Math One program across the district. And so, I think Dr. Cottle and Dr. Nelson are going to tag team some of the data that we're gonna share with you tonight and some of the implementation plans that are in place with, uh, the start of really the first month of school, just under a month of school at this point, and report out how that's been going. So, and at this point, I'd like to ask Dr. Cottle to take over.
Good evening, yes. Tonight, we'll present you a little bit of our pre-assessment data, which is really, you know, uh, data that our classroom teachers will be using. And then we'll start talking about, um, our N W E A MAP Diagnostic Needs Assessment, which is more of norm data. So really, there's three items here. One, I wanna share a little bit about our Math One team collaboration. And you'll see some things that are a little bit different about this collaboration is because we fo- focus more on learning than we do on teaching. Um, I have some little handouts for you that are at your table. And we'll talk a little about the pre-assessment data and show you the exercise that our teachers, our Math One teachers went through. And then, um, Dr. Nelson will come up and share with you some, some information about our N W E A MAP Diagnostic Assessment, and we're calling it a needs assessment, 'cause that's mainly what it is.
Dr. Cottle, are you gonna take any questions in regard to the plan itself? That was, uh, in the packet, or?
I ca, I can. I don't have a copy of it up here with me, but I can.
Okay.
So, do you wanna do it at the end? Is that okay if we do that at the end?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. So part of our implementation plan, you'll see in there different sections about common assessments. You'll see s- some information about common lessons. And you'll also see in that plan where we talk about the, the Math One teachers are meeting periodically to collaborate. And they're collaborating, collaborating around student data, but they're also collaborating about how to best meet new student, I mean, excuse me, how to best meet student needs in the classroom. So, when they collaborate, really what we've been doing is, is focusing on our mission. And this is kind of what our, we decided our mission would be. So the Math One teachers, basically, over the course of the year, when we collaborate, we want to focus on student learning and we wanna focus on results. Lot of times, we talk about the curriculum and we talk about teaching, but we really need to talk about what the experience is, that end experience for students. So every time we meet, we will refer back to this, just to remind ourselves. And our mission really is, and we got this quote from Dr. De Forre, "Our mission is to not simply ensure that students are taught, but really to ensure, ensure that they're learning." So a lot of times, we talk about covering the curriculum and we taught, taught the curriculum. Well, how do we know that? How do we know students are learning and growing and progressing the way they should? So on the seventeenth of September, the first time our teachers got together, everyone, um, in August, we had a collaboration session where a few of the leads came. It was during the summer where they actually went through and looked at the curriculum. But on the seventeenth, our teachers got together to look at some pre-assessment data. And I will share a little bit later in the, in this presentation what the assessment data was. But the purpose of them meeting and collaborating is they really wanted to truly understand what their students were bringing to the table. Most of the students in the integrated Math One course are ninth grade students. They would, would be new to the high school. Some of them are upperclassmen, but they'd be new to the school, new to the teacher. So the purpose of the pre-assessment data was to look at what background information students had. Did they remember certain prerequisite skills? Um, the pre-assessment was also to look at some of the things, and the topics that they're going to cover over the first three units and see, okay, do students already have kind of an idea of what some of these topics are? So that was the goal, to meet together and to, to better understand what their students bring, bring to the table, so that they can fill gaps or they can make some, you know, informed decisions. And I'm sorry, I'm not talking very well. Maybe it's 'cause I'm trying to rush. So when the math team gets together, they really collaborate around these four questions. And we will be using these questions several times through the course of the year. And so the first question is really, what are the essential concepts we want all students to learn? And in this case, those essential concepts are And in this case, those essential concepts are those Math One learning targets that were approved by the school board. And when they go through these assessments, um, when, and it's kind of hard to explain this, but when they go through the pre-assessment and then later on in the course of the year, we will be doing checkpoint assessments, they will ask themselves these questions once they receive the data. And so that, what the assessments help us understand is, how do we know students are really mastering the concepts we want them to learn? And then the most important questions are questions three and four. They're the so what. And the so what is, how do we respond when students experience initial difficulty? And how are we going to respond if students have mastered those skills? So when we met on the seventeenth, that's what they were practicing. They were looking at the pre-assessment data and saying, okay, some students know some of these skills. So how are we going to adjust our teaching? Some students have some deficits and some gaps. So how are we gonna adjust teaching to also meet their needs as well? And the reason I'm talking about the pre-assessment today is because it's really, um, not only a way for teachers to get to know their students, but it's a way for them to practice using the protocol and looking at the data when it's not necessarily a high-stakes situation. Later on in the course of the year, you will see on the, the schedule, there's a checkpoint assessment in, later in October. During that checkpoint assessment, they'll actually be asking these questions because they will have taught the material, they will look at how students did on that checkpoint assessment, and that's where the rubber will meet the road. They will have to say, okay, which concepts do we need to go back and reteach? Which ones for students that really have mastered them, do I need to deepen their learning? So it's an all-in exercise, you know, at the beginning to prepare, prepare teachers for when the rubber meets the road and they really need to do, act on the data. And stop me if I'm not making any sense, please. So one of the handouts that you have is a protocol. And so it kind of looks, it's, it's kind of the one that looks like a grid. So what, and then another handout you have is an actual example of, um, the, the assessment data. And it starts out, and it has like, it actually says on the top, pre-assessment data. But before I go through this, I want to kind of share the purpose of the protocol. The reason we use protocols is we only have an hour and a half of collaboration time. So we wanna make sure that we're using our time effectively and efficiently. So we, so what a protocol does is it helps us target what we're talking about. It also helps us capture what our next steps are. So in this particular protocol that we used, we really had three phases. The first phase was teachers just to look at the data, not make any judgments. Describe what they saw on initial impressions. Then they went through and spent some time and took a deeper dive and looked at the data and said, okay, what does this data suggest? What's going on? And then the third most important step is, how are we gonna take this data to change what our instruction will be in the classroom? So that's kind of an overview. So the pre-assessment, instead of giving students a pre-assessment over the whole course of the year, they, the teachers decided to focus really on Unit One. And so this grid is kind of, is from the, fuck, excuse me. This is the front page of the pre-assessment and it shows what that assessment is testing. On here, you'll see that there are items from Unit One, Two, and Three. So in Unit One, there were some questions, two questions that cover data analysis and display. From Unit Two, there were two questions on solving linear, excuse me, three questions on solving linear, linear equations. And then Unit Three, two questions on real world linear equations. And then Unit Four, linear inequalities. And so Unit One, Two, and Three are, are all content that the students haven't seen yet. So the purpose of putting them on the pre-assessment is to see, you know, what students can kind of figure this out knowing what they know. Or each, students have different backgrounds. Some of these things they may have seen before, so where are our students really at? And then Five and Six are the background information. Skills that students need to have when they hit these units, One, Two, and Three is they need to really have a deep understanding of fractions and equivalent expressions. And so we put this on the pre-assessment, so teachers would know, if they're not remembering their fractions, then I'm gonna have a hard time getting to some of the linear equations. And so I need to do some reteaching. So the assessment, pre-assessment had fourteen questions. And so to give you kind of an example, I just put a couple of questions up there on data analysis and display. And what we did is, um, they used a Google, Google form and they completed the test online. And then we actually aggregated the data for them and disaggregated it and then put it in this little format for them. So that's kind of an example. They're very SAT-like. Some of the questions are, you know, from past SATs and some aren't. Some are ones that we had created in the past and we had the end of course assessment. So what I would like to do is actually run you through the process really quickly. So you'll see the document that has the pre-assessment. When you open it up, you will see the first part of the protocol. It says, "Learning Target Analysis by Teacher." And so teachers actually got, the real names are not on here, but we took the names off. But teachers actually got to see their class as well as the other teachers in their building, as well as how their school did and how the district did. And so the first part of the protocol, they just looked at the data and asked these questions and thought about it and talked about it. How does the background knowledge of our students compare? And what are the strengths and weaknesses of students' prior learning for each concept? And so as you kind of look through it, you can get some just kind of initial impressions. The interesting part is when we went through this and we looked at the review, Five and Six, the background knowledge on fractions, it's really kind of telling on students and their ability to retain information on fractions.
So is this given to eighth graders and eighth graders that are in honors math or would qualify for Math One and then freshmen, is that correct?
Yes. So our eighth grade ALP students took the pre-assessment, our math, our Math One at the high school and at Venture. So that's the first thing they did, is they kind of looked at trends. Then the second part of the pro- protocol, they actually went in and, they went and started asking the questions, what do the trends tell us? And so I'll just give you time to look and I know it's not necessarily a workshop, but but like on the fractions and some of them, you can see it's really interesting that there's a third and a third and a third. There's some concept that, that you can see where a lot of students struggle. Um, some interesting things that we noticed in, and I participated in the group at Lake City, is that their classes were well distributed. I mean, they didn't have some classes where, you know, there were a whole bunch of students that struggled and then others where students were doing well. They were pretty well spread out.
Trina, my question, I guess, would be back to you, you know, as we look at this data, you know, it's difficult for me to weigh in on how, what we should expect to see. So on questions Five and Six, if this is review information, what would you guys expect to see? Is this information, well, kind of what you expected or is this concerning or is this, you know, what's your thought on it, I guess?
I think it's what we expect. Students traditionally have a, a hard time retaining fractions. And so what, what the teachers would do is the next step is we actually went into the item analysis. And so that's where the teachers start actually looking at the questions, like the fraction questions and what part of those questions, you know, which questions are students not getting and how many aren't, you know, what's the issue? Is it a common denominator? Um, so they delve, that, so the, I cannot talk today. So the second part of the protocol really is them going through the item analysis and looking at, okay, where are students really having problems? And so they spent a time, quite a bit of time doing that. And then the third part of this is they, we actually gave them the information of individual students. So there's two pieces on here. One of them is we looked at students that had three or less correct on any of their responses. And so they had some data there. So they could see, you know, students that missed a whole bunch, where are they kind of really struggling? Are there pockets of, of areas where they have strength or, or not? And then there's one that's not on here, but we also looked at students that had ten or more correct. And it was pretty interesting to see where that information was. But regardless of the data, the important part of it is, by the time the teachers went through all, each stage of the protocol, the last step is, how is this going to inform my instruction? What are my next steps? We had several teachers that, you know, made, um, action plans where they're going to take those students that are really, really struggling and try to, um, find some ways to remediate. Um, they also talked about things that they're going to do for those students that are, you know, really understand quite a bit of the material. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we did.
Trina, can I ask you one more question? So are we notifying parents of these results? So like, let's say there's a parent that needs remediation. Are they gonna be in on the loop that their student's been identified as needing some extra help?
Well, not really with the pre-assessment. And so what happens with classroom assessments is there, there's different types. There's those informal assessments that teachers use to change their instruction. And so teachers definitely can share this information with parents if, if they want to. Um, there's also, but, um, but this type of assessment is, is meant to be more informal, where teachers are going through and just kind of doing a dipstick, where are, where are students? Um, and it could be something like this pre-assessment. It can be something like our checkpoint assessments. Or it could be just a teacher walking around, looking at student work, talking to students. So it's really kind of an informal way to assess. Um, the next part of the presentation really kind of answers that question is, you know, what's really a good assessment to share with our parents? To show students where their gaps are and where they're growing and prog- progressing. And that's where we would like to add the NWEA MAP Assessment. And that's what Mike's gonna speak to. So I don't know if I kind of answered that. This is more of a internal, you know, dipstick, where's the oil and how are we going to adjust? And then the NWEA MAP Diagnostic Assessment is something that's gonna be more specific that we could share with parents. If teachers could. And I don't know if I answered that very well.
Okay. I have a couple of questions on this.
Yes.
So this, the, this first, the pre-assessment was really looking at, at a broad spectrum, I guess. It was looking at several, several units, several of which they hadn't seen before?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. I guess, I just wonder, two questions on a concept. Is that an adequate number of questions to determine whether a kid or student, uh, has a deficiency there or do they just, you know, they made a simple error? You know, I guess that's just the one thing I, it seems we're making broad assumptions on a little bit of data there. I mean, on two questions say, oh, this student, uh, has difficulty with data analysis. And they may have just transposed a number or, you know, put six instead of nine or, you know, who knows what. And they may understand the concept, just they made a, a simple error, which we've all done, so.
No, and, and you're correct. That's why I'm saying it's more of a informal assessment. It's like a dipstick. The whole purpose of doing the pre-assessment was for teachers to get a little bit of background information on what their students know and, and what they don't know, but also give them practice using a data protocol. Um, we have not done a lot of this with our, our teachers. But it also brings up to the point why we are interested in partnering with NWEA, because we do need something that's more robust, that's more diagnostic, because this really is just a dipstick. You go around and you check and it's one spot in time, but it's really not diagnostic enough to say, okay, this kid's really struggling here, because we've had multiple questions and, and multiple ways to assess.
Okay.
So I don't know if I, if I turn the, Mike over to Dr. Nelson, he may be able to explain some of the NWEA piece. But the purpose of me presenting this here is just to show some ways that they're starting to collaborate. And yes, it's informal data, it's not as robust, um, but we have some plans where we would like to bring some of that to the table, where we can actually, you know, provide some data so we know where we need to remediate students, where student strengths are and how we compare.
Okay. I wanna make sure I understood something you said a few minutes ago about as far as, once they've gone through that worksheet and they're talking about refining their practices, that's on an individual basis and that's their own, um?
It's individual, it's individual, but they also had to share with the group. Um, and we caught, it's what we call the structured commitment. So when they meet, again, the next time, they have to report out to their group and hold each other accountable on this is something that I actually did. This is what worked, this is what didn't work. Um, we had a debrief with all the Math One leads and with the administrator over Math One after this collaboration to talk about, okay, what were your insights? Where are teachers struggling? What are some of the next steps? How did they do with the protocols? How, so we are putting some accountability pieces and then they'll have to go back. But the rubber will truly meet the road when we do the checkpoint assessment and then if we do a diagnostic.
Okay. And was the collaboration at the building level or was it district?
It was at the building level.
Okay. So Lake City's unaware of what CHS may be doing and vice versa?
After they met, after they met at the building level, the math leads from every building met together and debriefed the activity.
So Lake City's unaware of what CHS is doing and vice versa?
Yes and no.
I mean, the leads know, but, uh?
The leads bring the information back. So in the collaboration calendar, we have times where just the buildings are meeting. We have times where everyone's meeting together, but the leads are meeting periodically to share information back and forth. So teachers aren't always meeting as a whole group. Does that kind of make sense?
It is what it is. Um, I have a few questions on the plan here. Would you like me to do that now before Mike starts?
Sure.
Sorry, Ms., uh, Ms. May has a question here on this.
On this, on this pre-assessment data that you just presented, was this done only for Math One during collaboration or is this done for all math classes or, you know, geometry, algebra?
Just Math One.
Because it seems like this is best practices and we're looking towards, uh, best practices. So isn't this a process that could easily be put in place during collaboration for geometry, Algebra Two? And if it's not, why are we doing something similar to this? Where, we're sitting around and talking about pre-assessment data and making action plans for our students?
It definitely is something we can do in the other courses. And when we wrote the implementation plan, basically, that's what our, our thought process was, is when we get, you know, this year we're focusing on Math One. We wanna make sure that we're being really, really intentional with those Math One teachers. We need to teach them how to use data, how to be comfortable using data, how to work together. Um, those, you know, it's great to look at data, but it's what do I do next to make sure students are really learning? So we really kind of focused on Math One, but we definitely could use it in other areas. Portland Lane Ri- High School right now is trying to get all their departments to collaborate around those questions, um, but they're at the beginning stages. They're talking about what's, what's our guaranteed and viable curriculum, you know, what are those essential things we want students to learn? So it's definitely a process we can do. We, I've just, we've just been focusing on the Math One implementation because we've been trying to do it lockstep at a time and.
Yeah, I think my, my question on that would be, I remember the, the heated, you know, discussion last year regarding Math One implementation. And I remember that the, the, um, implementation protocol was really well-received and it was talked about, this should be our best practices for every math department. So I, I guess I'm not comfortable with saying, well, we're only doing this for Math One because we're focusing on it. This should be happening in collaboration for every department. And I, I hope that that's the minimum expectation and that we're using pre-assessment data and we're making plans. It shouldn't just be Math One, it should be every math course that's taught at a secondary level, knowing what we're facing, looking at continuous improvement plan, you know, what our scores are. I think there's some easy things that we can implement this year that would, would help address some of our lagging scores. And I, I, I see it's in place and it's great and it's fantastic, but let's, let's share the wealth.
I, I agree. I just, I think for us, it's, we, it's, you know, we can, for us, it's really prioritizing our work because we have, you know, so limited resources and we wanna do a good job here. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you wanna answer that?
Yeah, I like to jump in. So I think one of the things that's really important, I agree with you. And I think that, that the issue here, here is that we've gotta learn to walk before we can learn to run. And so the, the difference we've got is that, uh, we're, we're, we're taking on a mindset that we're not gonna teach algebra or geometry or Algebra Two, we're gonna teach kids. And that's two completely different kind of starting points, right? And so part of that training that we're giving and that working through the protocols is getting that understanding that if, if we're going to be beyond the, the sage on the stage that's just talking about or teaching Algebra One concepts, now we're talking about, all right, we're gonna take measurements, we're gonna figure out what do our kids know? What do our kids bring in and where are the gaps that we need to fill? And not only are we gonna do that with each individual kid, but then we're also gonna put it, uh, square it up against a, a national expectation that is, these are the concepts that we would want every kid to know in algebra, in geometry or Algebra Two or, or whatever math, uh, whatever delivery mechanism that it's in, if it's in a traditional course or an integrated course. And so I, I agree with you. We, we will aspire to that, but we're working towards that in, uh, in chunks that are manageable right now. And it's been about a month of school and I think this is the first, unless I'm unaware of it, this is the first time we've taken on this particular kind of a professional development with our math teachers, at least in recent history that I'm aware of. And it would be shifting the culture and shifting the mechanism for the way that we would help deliver support for teachers to then deliver instruction and with kids centered at the beginning. to then deliver instruction and with kids centered at the beginning of the focal point, rather than I'm gonna teach algebra because I'm an algebra teacher. We're teaching algebra to students and so you have to change the approach because now it's a student-centered approach rather than a teacher, adult-centered approach. That's, and I think we would want that for all kids. We would want that for all kids.
I get what you're saying, but it's falling on somewhat deaf ears because I have a student who is not in Math One and I think every student deserves best practices and I think we can be doing better on collaboration time. We have collaboration time and why can't a basic model, this doesn't have to be this in-depth, but you know, assurances that we're collaborating with the students' first approach should not take years to implement. And Math One, you know, we're gonna start talking about Math Two soon. If we wait to say, you know, we're gonna have three, four more years of teaching geometry and algebra. I don't think it's fair to those students to say, well, you're on the back burner because we're working on this Math One implementation. There are some basic, you know, things that we can implement now that would improve the quality of instruction in our classroom. And I, I don't think it has to be all encompassing. I think it's best practices. And if it's best practices for Math One, then it's best practices for geometry and algebra and pre-calculus and calculus. And this to me looks like a best practices model, I guess.
We, we would not argue against you on that. We're just starting with Math One because we've committed to that. We will, this will translate across all content areas over time. It will.
That's, doesn't sit well for me, for those other students that were saying, well, you know, we're busy. For me, I just want you to, it doesn't sit well.
Yeah, that's fair. Trina, before you turn it over to Mike here, so on the Math One implementation plan, it was in the board packet.
Yes.
With an October one date, so I assume it's an updated version, but I just had a couple comments, questions, I guess, on it.
Okay.
One, back when this was approved by the board, there were a number of, and it's mainly in the desired outcomes column, but things that were kind of unknowns. And they were gonna be, the plan says that they'd be developed in a spring 2018 meeting. And I don't see where we've gone back into the plan and filled in those blanks. So to me, it's, it appears that we haven't done those things. I assume we just haven't filled in the blanks, but.
Are you talking specifically about the documents or? Because what I've done on the plan is sometimes I'll just put completed because it actually means that there's certain products. There's curriculum documents that we have, there's curriculum assessments that are built. And we have those and we have those on, you know, on our drive system and not necessarily embedded in the document. And I could embed them and embed links. I mean, you're just, it just would make it really, really huge. I can do that, or if there's specific things you would like to see, you know, we can send you some of those things too.
All right.
Or, or can you let me know what specific part that?
Well, for instance.
If it's something I need to clarify in the document.
You know, one's in, on Math One Retreat. And it talks about the Math One Retreat. And it kind of says who's gonna be involved and who the lead is and all those sorts of things. But it says desired outcome. Outcome measures for Math One team task in spring 2018. Initial professional development collaboration task prior to school. So to me, that sounds like something was gonna be done there. There was gonna be some sort of plan, but I don't see that reflected here. To me, it seems like it's incomplete because that, that box doesn't have anything in it, other than it says it's gonna be completed in spring of 2018. So maybe it's just not reflected in this document, I guess, is what you're telling me.
Yes, and I think a lot of it's because some of our documents, for example, the end of course assessment, the common lessons. When we did professional development, I mean, we do have, we do have the supporting documents of the agendas and things like that. But what it sounds like maybe I need to do is clean up some of that language. Or at least provide links to what you'd like to see.
Okay, I'll provide more, I'll submit my questions in writing. The only other thing I guess I have on here that, in regard to the plan, is, and it's in the very first part of that chart there, but it's curriculum and assessment creation. And the desired outcome is unit plans that include one common checkpoint assessment and one common lesson. And when I look at this sheet that was provided in our packet and you gave us a hard copy here that says Math One Collaboration Assessment Schedule, I see 12 units and I see 12, or I see five common lessons. But the plan we approved said there'd be a common lesson for each unit. It also says there'd be an assessment for each unit and I don't see that reflected in that document either, so.
They, they are there, maybe I just need to, maybe we just need to make sure they show up better. So, so.
They're not there. They're not in the document.
They should, well, they should be links. So I don't know if it comes through with the packet. Maybe we need to talk and then we can talk and show, but. But for example, Unit One, the Unit One checkpoint is there. Well, they did the pre-assessment. This week they're actually doing the common lesson, and that's eighty-two forty solving linear equations. And when you click on that, it kind of gives you an idea what it is. The actual common lesson documents we have on Google Drive, if you want to see specific documents. Then they're going to give the checkpoint assessment. Now that checkpoint is Unit One and Two. It's not one per unit. And so that's probably where I need to do some cleanup.
Okay, where would I, where does it indicate that there's a common lesson for Unit Three?
On the collaboration, and that's probably why it's confusing, on the schedule where it says Math One Collaboration and Assessment Schedule. And then you look at the week, October first through October fourth, you'll see common lesson and then it'll have a name of it with a link.
I see that, but then over to the right, it says that that's for Unit Two. And then if you go down and you look in the three weeks where they're teaching Unit Three, I don't see where there's a common lesson. Again, on Unit Four, Unit Six. And it continued on through the document, so. If it's there, it's not reflected, I guess. And so that was, I, I mean, I see where the assessment appears to be, we're assessing multiple units at the same time. I get that. But I don't see the common lesson reflected there.
Okay, that makes sense. So we have a disconnect between this document and the implementation plan. And that, so I will reflect the changes in the implementation plan. The reason they're different is we only have so many Mondays that we can pull them away from their building. So it sounds like that's where the differences are.
To me, the difference is the plan we approved said that there'd be a common lesson for every unit. And what you've presented here is there's not a common lesson for every unit.
Correct.
So that's the disconnect for me.
Correct.
And you're saying that that's time now. Is that, I understand you're right?
Well, no, now, now I understand what you were saying, the difference was between the plan and this. Yes. We could definitely build them in there, they just would not be able to collaborate around each one. Because we only have so many Mondays where I can get them together. They're also part of their building.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add something? When we, when we developed this implementation plan and we presented it to the board, we didn't present the, this that we would follow everything lockstep. We knew that this was going to be a living, breathing document and that we would have to make adjustments. And so obviously it's my error that we have a disconnect between, I mean, there's differences with what I have here in the collaboration assessment schedule and what's in the implementation plan. And so that's not an intentional oversight. It's, we probably need to adjust some of those things. And maybe we need to get clarity on if the expectation is to follow this exactly how it's written or if when we do make updates, or if there's, if, how you'd like those.
Well, I can't speak for everyone, but my expectation would be when we approve something, it'd be followed. Yes, that is, that's my expectation. So that's why we approve curriculum, so if that's what you're asking, yes. For me, that would be my expectation.
I have a general question. How are the new textbooks switching over to an integrated text? You know, we were gonna kind of use all these different textbooks last year and then I know in May we decided to go ahead. Is it working out or are the teachers liking it? Is it helpful?
I think Mike could probably answer some of those.
Trustee May, I think the best answer for that is no news is good news.
Okay.
I have heard no complaints. We have student journals in the hands of every student and a brand-new text in front of them as well. As far as I know, that content is being used with fidelity.
Right, perfect. I know last year also with the one thing we were talking about that was included in our implementation plan was that we're communicating with parents. This is a huge switchover in mindset and how we approach math. Is it possible to get an update, you know, how are we communicating with parents? Is it email from teachers? Is it Math Night? Are there online resources for parents if they're struggling, you know, kind of comprehending? We no longer teach geometry, you know, it's, it's a mindset change and it's complicated.
Trustee May, I can tell you, I personally sent an email to all students in Math One. At the very beginning of the year, it was, I believe, the Thursday of the first week of classes. And that email talked to them not only about what Math One is, because it's new nomenclature for us, but it also provided a lot of supports. There's some apps that Big Ideas Math offers, plus their online components that we directed them to as well. And I can certainly forward a copy of that message if you'd like to see it. But that is part of our normal communication that we have. And I do know that also our classroom teachers have been communicating out as well as to what the differences that they would be seeing.
Is there a way we could easily check in with parents who are involved with this new Math One curriculum or appropriate curriculum and see how they're doing? Are they feeling good about it? Are they up to date? Or is, you know, how are they doing?
Just a general survey?
Yeah, I think a basic, general, maybe we do it at conference time or after we have the NWEA data. But I think checking with them, touching base, are we doing okay? Are you feeling informed? Is your student excited about this change? Are you comfortable with it? Just check in and.
Putting it in right now.
Okay, so we could talk about this for a long time apparently, and it's getting late. So why don't we kind of move on to what Mike has to present around this? If we have more comments, questions, concerns, I'm sure we can address them.
And I can keep it pretty brief.
Everyone's okay with that?
I can keep it pretty brief as well. You know, one of the criticisms of moving to an integrated plan is that we don't want a self-fulfilling prophecy. It's great that we're doing these new formative assessments, but they're created by us. The scope and sequence is created by us. So one of the things that we would like to offer you tonight is the addition of an, an extra assessment for students in Math One. But answering some of Trustee May's concerns as well is that this assessment would also be provided to any student in a high school math equivalent course. So we're talking Algebra One, excuse me, that's replaced, Math One, Geometry, Algebra Two, and those assorted courses along the way. And what this would do is a couple of things for us. The first, it would be able to identify any pitfalls that students may have. The students regularly receive diagnostics in grades K through eight, but in nine through 12, we kind of let that go and we rely upon the ISAT at the end of the year, the PSAT to help drive instruction. What these new assessments would be, which is called the MAP Growth Assessment, would be a nationally-normed assessment provided three times a year. Beginning of the year, middle of the year, could be used as an end of course assessment, end of the year. In addition to that, we would have the option to be able to put in a single checkpoint assessment every month. Could be an addition, could be replacing, could be a variety of different options that progress monitors students' growth over the course of the time. From the classroom teacher perspective, they actually get a pretty rich dashboard as to what this looks like for a classroom student. I'm gonna switch down here into my pointer mode. And you can see these are the different levels from zero, one, two, three, four, if we use common ISAT vocabulary for you along the way. And we can basically track a student's growth towards a particular goal. Also somewhat difficult to say is that Math One is an integrated approach. So you're gonna see everything from algebra, geometry, Algebra Two. But what if it's just a geometry course? Well, we'd be able to see not only geometry, we'd be able to see also number sense. We'd be able to see again geometry and we might be able to see some algebraic thinking in here as well. So not only are we gonna be able to focus a little bit more on the content of the course and make sure that every student is on their own growth pattern, but also have a nationally-normed assessment to find out, how are we doing not only with the individual student growing, but meeting their overall goals of mastering standards by the end of the academic year? These reports are pretty rich, so in terms of communicating to moms and dads, we would be able to print these out at any time, not only just after the diagnostic, but we'd be able to include them in regular reports to you as well as an aggregate.
I'd just like to say, I think this is fantastic. I like that they're a not-for-profit organization. It's always nice when you bring something on that, that's, you know, part of it. I know you mentioned the homeroom or classroom. Is this something that we could link these results into if we started using homeroom?
Yes.
It'd be a great resource.
These are single-linked syncs through homerooms, so that, that brings in the student, the information management system that we talked about earlier. This data would tie in with and go in with our PSAT, so we'd be able to look at PSAT and MAP. We'd be able to look at SAT, we'd be able to look at ISAT and again, get a holistic understanding of what this student can and cannot do.
Thank you, this is great.
So if the board feels positive about this, our first initial professional development, it looks like it's gonna be on October 12th. We'll move forward with having our MAP representatives here and send you an invitation as well so you can come by and see what all of our teachers would be doing together. About twenty-seven to thirty math teachers from our middle schools, because Math One is at eighth grade as well, all the way up through our high schools.
Yeah, just, I'd piggyback on what Ms. May there, Ms. May said there that I'm glad we're bringing this in and I thank you, Dr. Cook, for your work on this and Dr. Nelson. And I hope we can, as we refine it, continue to find ways to identify students that have gaps and that we identify ways to remediate those gaps. You know, one great thing, and I don't know that I shared this with Dr. Cook or if any of you guys know, but one of, I was talking to one of our math teachers who's teaching boost, Math One Boost, I believe, at Lake City. And as you know, Lake City's on the AB schedule, so they have math every other day. But not, if those kids are identified and put in the boost class this year, they have math every day. So they basically are getting double the instruction. So I think that was a really creative way that Deanne and staff over there came up with to help get those kids extra instruction and hopefully get them back on track, so.
And if we really love this, this option, maybe next year we look at it for ELA. I saw that they offer that and it'd be nice.
And science and social studies and, you know, you certainly have to find balance, right? In terms of how often we assess, but what this is really doing is it's focusing again on instruction. It's not about the materials, it's about the qualities that we have in and around that communication in the classroom. This will help with that a great deal. So, and again, to have ourselves put on that national plane also is another level up.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nelson and Dr. Cottle. So next up is just an update on our All Day Kindergarten. And I want to apologize to Ms. Pika, Mr. Depew, who've been sitting here for several hours. We used a different process in developing our agenda this month. And I can see one thing that we need to just take into consideration there is when we're asking staff members to come, that we're considerate of that. And I think we tried to front-load the things that might have more community involvement and not knowing that you guys were gonna be here. So I apologize that you've sat here for two hours or three hours or whatever it's been tonight. So thank you for being here and sorry that we've kept you so long. Good evening, Dr. Roscoe.
Good evening, board members. Thank you, Lisa and Brett, for being here. We asked our administrators of Meadows and Sorenson to talk about sort of three different areas from the in-the-trenches experience that they're having with All Day K. One of them was, we asked them to talk about what, what, what's kind of the lived experience of the children and families there in the classrooms of an All Day K in the midst of a school that's half-day K? So what's that experience academically and emotionally? What are they noticing? Secondly, we asked them, I asked them, if they would share with you any observations that they're making about those five seats that we preserved, either for struggling learners or for families who are struggling financially. So we preserved those seats. I, I wanted them to share with us maybe what they've noticed there. And then finally, just kind of an overall experience of the community. We all know we had some hiccups a little bit with families who maybe didn't hear about the All Day K program early enough. And so I wanted them to share maybe just a little bit about what they're noticing about the community. And then finally, I, after they have a chance to do that, I'd like to just share some thoughts, some feedback I've had from other schools who don't have that pilot experience and, and kind of what I've heard there.
I think you need to hear about five-year-olds after all of this. Well, first of all, Hayden Meadows would like to thank the board for allowing us to have a pilot program. I think for our clientele, having a half-time kindergarten option, but then also a full-time option has been spoken of very positively. Parents like, some parents want to keep their kids at home half the day. Other parents are stating that their children are ready for a full-day program. And also for those working parents, this has been a great alternative for them. And I'm hearing lots of positive things about having the option, so thank you for that. We chose to, we have five seats that we did select certain students. We did a prescreener of all of. We did a prescreener of all of our kindergarteners and then also took a look at our free and reduced lunch students. And then we chose based on the free and reduced and then also the prescreener, those kiddos that needed it. We offered it to the parents. And so, the parents were very appreciative of it. It's been only a month so far, but the teachers and the kids seem very happy. I had asked Mary Hoskins, who is our full-day kindergarten teacher, to come and join us, but she had to leave a little bit earlier. But she just had mentioned that it feels very relaxed and an unhurried atmosphere because we expect so much of our kindergarten students now in this day and age. She said there's more time for quality interactions, more time for a variety of experiences, more time to focus and reflect on activities, more time to learn and explore in depth, more reading time, not just during storytime, and more opportunities for developing social skills, development of the whole child, not just academics. So, she's very pleased so far with, with the way it's turning out. And then we asked our little five-year-olds, what do you like about kindergarten? And of course, I have one little guy that every day, when I ask him, "How was day one?" He said, "It's the best day ever in my whole life." So, I finally asked him why, and he said that because he's in kindergarten. But the kids had mentioned some of the things that they liked, lots of reading, we get lots of counting, we get to have recess, we have our teacher and the whole school to help us learn. So, those were just some of the things that they talked about. So far, like I said, the parents and the students have been very, every positive comments. We will survey our parents halfway through the year and then, of course, at the end of the year, just to make sure that this is an approach that's working for them and be able to give feedback to the board.
Were you able to accommodate all your parents who were interested in All Day K?
We were not. We did have a waiting list.
Oh, shoot. How big was your waiting list?
It wasn't, it wasn't very long. There were just a few parents and some that were inquiring from out of district as well.
Good evening, everybody. Superintendent Cook, Board Click Town, thanks for being here tonight. You're so quiet. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, thank you all for inviting Lisa and myself to be here tonight. At Sorenson, we were able to, to meet the request of every incoming kindergarten new to our school this fall for that full-day tuition-based kindergarten, as well as the half-day section. Additionally, we were able to issue four scholarships to families who, A, requested that scholarship for four-day, for the full-day kindergarten, and B, they also qualified to receive the scholarship based on our district's free and reduced application process. We also took additional steps in reviewing the kindergartner screen results, use that data to determine if there were students who we thought would be better served for placement in that full-day kindergarten classroom. As a result, this year, Sorenson has our one full-day tuition-based kindergarten, as well as the half-day section of non-tuition-based kindergarten. Twenty-three students in each of those classrooms. Both of our teachers, Mr. Decor and Ms. Briak, indicate that the year is off to a great and smooth start. Feedback from our parents has been nothing but positive. Mr. Decor, our half-day kindergarten teacher, wanted to let you all know that he says the process is going very well, and it's definitely a positive that we offer parents this choice. Thank you to Katie Erasco and our district administration, Katie Ebner, the finance department, those school districts around the state who were able to provide us with their full-day kindergarten plan. This allowed us to glean ideas for creating our fair and hopefully just process at Sorenson. And Hayden Meadows, thanks to Principal Pika for answering some of those late afternoon and evening phone calls as we were troubleshooting through some of the challenges along the way. And thank you to you all for helping, allowing us to pilot the program. We hope to continue to full-day program at Sorenson and Hayden Meadows for future years, or at least until the day comes that we might be granted that additional funding from our State Department for all-day kindergarten classrooms in our district for all elementary schools without the tuition piece. That's my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't know if I have a question. I certainly would like to see this, I think all of us would, all, you know, full-day kindergarten at all the schools in our district and across the state. I know that's a political battle that's happening in Boise, and it'll be happening again this year. And I'm to the point, though, where I think it's so valuable that if the state, once again, fails in its funding of that, that we should take a look at our levy and whether or not we want to put those funds in there for that. Because I think it's so important. I mean, just feedback of you two, but I've heard it, and I, you know, I've heard it from other sources too, and the data seems to back it up. So, anyway, thank you for what you're doing. And I like the, your little discussion there also about the scholarships kids and how you kind of came up with them. I thought that was interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You got it.
Sticking it out.
I wanted to just share one last little tidbit, and it's that the All Day Kindergarten pilots at Meadows and Sorenson did not go unnoticed by other northern schools, not just northern, but other schools in our district. And I, I received more than one email from kindergarten teachers who wondered about why, why there, you know? And does it continue to? One pretty poignant email asked the question, a group of teachers asked the question, doesn't it continue to do? Families of affluence have that opportunity and other families don't, you know? And so, I've responded that none of us disagree with what Mr. Hearn just said. We all agree that we should have all-day kindergarten for everybody. We all agree that space is a big issue. We found two schools with a classroom of space and could afford them that opportunity. So, that will, I know that conversation will go on. I think, Mr. Hearn, you, you said it. Unless and until our state figures that out, we'll be, we'll probably be in this conversation.
And I'd like to piggyback on that, that the area where we're not offering any all-day kindergarten programs is in the northwest, where we're seeing the most overcrowding. And Jeff, if you're listening back there, the plans that we keep showing for the mockup of our new elementary school do not accommodate all-day kindergarten. I know I've mentioned it once, but I'll mention it again. We need to get those plans changed so there are four kindergarten classrooms, because it could be an issue as far as cost of facilities. But, you know, initially, when we first drew that plan up, I think we weren't even thinking that all-day kindergarten is as close as it potentially could be. But I think that next elementary school darn well better be able to accommodate four classrooms of kindergarten.
Thanks. And a public note of gratitude to those two people who truly at the, what felt like the last second, pulled the resources together and the organization and parents and teachers and made it happen. So, as tired as they look right now, they deserve a round of applause.
We're, we're more tired than you are.
Dr. Erasco, or this might be for Katie, it just, how's it gone kind of a month in on the billing side of things? Has that worked out?
It's worked out okay from my end. You may ask one or two parents. We've had a couple hiccups along the way. But I, I put together a, a report, just kind of showing, we, we won't know until the end of the year, really, if it's, how much, we anticipated running the program a bit in the red, but because the tuition is monthly, we won't know until the end of the year, really, where we're at as far as running the program. It's looking like the program loss could be less just because the paracost was a bit higher on the budget end than it ended up needing to be. So, as far as collecting tuition, we're currently doing that via ACH, and that's, that's going smoothly. If this program were to expand, we would probably have to look into having a vendor process those payments. So, that would be an additional cost.
Okay. Thank you.
I know one thing that Dr. Erasco mentioned that she was going to bring up, and I know we're late, so we won't talk about it tonight, but down the road, talking about what it's like to be in a school that has one all-day kindergarten or full-day and one not, I've heard from a couple parents, what's next year going to be like for those students? So, down the road, when it's not nine o'clock, it'd be a conversation to start having.
Okay. Thank you both for being here again. Sorry to keep you so late. Okay, gang, it's nine o'clock, so let's try to rock and roll these last couple items, if we can.
You don't have to say anything. Mike gets approved.
Yeah.
This is information.
All right, all right.
Nice try. And you're counting on me to rock and roll?
Yeah.
Chair Morris Rowe, we have tonight for you two brand-new course pacing guides. Zoology is looking to be resurrected at Coeur d'Alene, excuse me, Lake City High School for this coming semester. We have not taught zoology. In fact, the current textbook that we have up on the shelf with a lot of dust on it was a 1997 copyright. So, that's something we're going to have to deal with as we go along the way, but we do have an updated course pacing guide for you that has now gone out for 30-day public review. In addition, a very unique proposal for you is for discovery. One of NEXA's tenants is exploration, and they have decided that they would like to try to move away from offering music as the alternative to this discovery course. And you can see what they've done is actually interweave the humanities inside of it, but it's not standalone music instruction like we have seen in other elementaries. So, K-5 Discovery and Zoology are now in your packet for information, and they are out for 30-day public review.
Okay. Any questions on the?
Is zoology both high schools or is it?
You may remember, Trustee May, whenever a course is approved, it becomes part of our course catalog. So, that is, even though the course request comes from Lake City High School, if the board does approve in the next month's meeting, that course would be available for any school in the high schools to be able to latch on to.
Seems like Lake City gets all of the really interesting courses.
Well, I will be very honest, their, their schedule allows for that. The electives offerings are certainly much larger. One of the challenges that I have in my position, however, is that many of those elective choices were put in right when the blocks started, and we don't have an updated curriculum for any of them. So, as we're going through and we're seeing new courses coming through, we're working as hard as we can to make sure that things are up to date.
Dr. Nelson, so is that a semester course?
It is a semester zoology course. It's in the upper right-hand corner of your pacing guide.
And it's an alternative to, to another course or it's just an addition to?
It would be a life science elective, so it would go into the elective bucket for graduation. It's not lab-based, so it does not meet our graduation requirements nor the state's requirements. It's simply an explorative elective for third-year life science.
Okay. Thank you. How about, any questions on K-5 Discovery?
I notice one of the things is, one of the units is on raising chickens.
Have you seen, have you seen their chicken farm? Have you seen their chickens?
Uh, yes, I have. I just think it's kind of interesting.
Yeah. It's a crowd pleaser.
I've got just a couple of questions on this one, and I know this will be back before us.
On Discovery?
Uh, yes, sir. So, it's in lieu of music.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And I noticed the learning objectives that are there, and at least from what was there, they appear to be the same for every grade.
Mm-hmm.
So, a student who enters NEXA's kindergarten is going to be really proficient in these learning targets by fifth grade because they're going to see them for the sixth time.
And those learning targets and standards at the, at the state level are K-5 targets and standards. So, it is up to the classroom teacher to build upon the skills that students have received year to year to year to make it a little bit more complex or in-depth for them. If you'd like me to flush that out with the classroom teacher and get a little bit more detail as to what a standard developed would look like, if you want to give me a particular standard that you're particularly intrigued on, or I can work with them to get it more full.
Well, I'm just curious, you know, earlier we, we approved the K-5 music, um, course pacing guides.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it'd been a long time since that had been done, if I recall you saying before. And, you know, there are different standards for each grade level.
Mm-hmm.
And it allows for the teacher to build upon. And, and I just didn't see that here, and that was, I guess, one concern I have.
Sure.
My other concern that I have with this is, is basically eliminating music. Maybe it's not eliminating it because they have a
You'll see some incorporation.
Music unit, but it's, it's a big variation of it. Eight weeks of music versus when it's one day a week, I think, right? Versus 28 weeks of music or whatever it is.
And Chair Morris Rowe, I think one of the challenges that we have in this is this is truly a fly-the-plane-as-you're-building-it course. They would like to develop this along the way. That does not mean, however, that we can't bring it out to the extent that we have of K-5 music, but we have one teacher at one building wanting to develop this over five years. So, it is going to take a little bit of visioning for us to be able to get it to that level.
Okay. And then my last question on this. So, I assume we're teaching this now?
Currently, the course is being taught, but it's being taught under the music course. So, what their, their request to the board is, is that the board approve the course, and then they will build the new courses and flip that over into that. So, the current content teacher is effectively teaching music.
So, they're doing their music unit.
Correct.
It's chicken or egg there a little bit.
Very nice.
Okay.
I think you're sleepy.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mike on these? All right. Assessment and accountability updates. Do we want to punt this till next month or do we want to go through this currently?
I'd, I'd vote punt.
This is assessment and accountability updates. There's a lot of stuff there, and I can see us digging in deep on this or having lots of questions and.
When is, when is the State Department releasing this data? Is it?
December.
Okay. So, we still have time.
It has, it is released publicly on the state website. Their new data dashboard, their statewide report card will be online around that December time, where a lot of these will become a little bit more fluid, and you'll be able to dive in deeper into behind the numbers. My goal, of course, would be that you're not stunned by anything that you may be released by Idaho Ed News or any of our local media outlets. I wanted to get Lisa to give you a little bit of a lens on it, but we can certainly push it at your discretion.
We can do that. Do we want to get that information in a memo to us? I mean, we have some of the data here.
Each of these data points, a majority of them have been provided to you in the board memo. However, the current benchmark assessment windows that just closed are all brand-new. I can also share the presentation with you, which does gives you, does give you a visual of the data, if that would be your wish, and we can certainly work with you if you have any extra questions.
I think this data should come not in a memo, but it should be at a public meeting. It does not have to be tonight, but I think it's
So, why don't we punt this off till November's meeting?
Good.
Yeah. We'll give it that.
Can we come meet with you? You can kind of give us a one-on, one-on-one update on it.
Anytime you wish, and there are some details behind that. If you're looking at the large one, there, the formulas and everything are on page two. But there is some interpretation that you'll need to have.
I'll buy you a coffee.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ebner, you also got punished, I guess, for our new way of, of laying out the agenda here. So, sorry to keep you here for
I used to be at the beginning of the meeting. We'll just let you know.
Yeah. So, you're here for four hours.
All right. Um, yeah, sorry.
So, go ahead. I know this is a fairly brief report because we're just kicking off the fiscal year, so there's not a lot to show there. So, feel free to breeze through it.
Yes. Um, the, the August financial report doesn't give us a lot of information, but it is our first look at how the year is starting off. Our revenues, you'll notice, 43% collected, and that is because the state front loads us with our state apportionment funding. And it doesn't really have any correlation to what we're actually going to end up with as far as state funding. They just start sending us money, and then they true up as we get closer to the end of the year. So, not a lot of informa, useful information there. Expenditures, we have, have not spent very much money as of August 31st as a port, as a whole of our budget. That's because we don't start paying our, our school staff, or we, we pay them throughout the summer, but we don't start expending for the school year until September payroll, which is not reflected on this report. So, 4.51% of our budget expended there is comparable to prior year. When you're looking at our total equity balance, if you like to look at those metrics down at the notes below, you'll want to ignore the ending equity balance because we do not have our fund balance When you're looking at our total equity balance, if you like to look at those metrics down at the notes below, you'll want to ignore the ending equity balance because we do not have our fund balance, beginning fund balance for the year input. We're still waiting for those figures from the audit. The next report is just the same information, but in a different view, looking by program. Not a lot of interesting information on that one. And then we've got our graphs that have the same information in a visual form. On our enrollment report, I just wanted to note we're up 94 students from previous year for the same period. You may be drawn to the number of the variance of 212 students comparing to June enrollment. That's sort of an apples-to-oranges comparison. You're comparing a high number, which is fall enrollment, to our, one of our lowest counts of the year, which is June. So I wouldn't focus too much on that number. Any questions?
And maybe just because it's early in the year, but our expenditures are up, I think it was 1.2. Is that because our overall budget is larger, so we're spending incrementally more money?
Exactly. Yeah, you, you may see, oh, you know, we're, we're 1.2% less on the metrics in the notes below than we were for the prior year, but you have to take into consideration that it's a different budget. And if you remember, last year, most of the year, we were running a projected deficit until our revenues came in higher. So we were running a little hot early in the year, whereas we're not looking that way right now. But let's wait until we get one more month of payroll in before we start to really focus on these numbers, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ebner. Sorry to keep you here so late. Okay. Next up, I see Mr. Roller popping up there, is item M, which is our construction update.
Okay, so projects are moving along nicely. Coeur d'Alene High School is getting dried in this week. So you'll see in another slide here, the roof is actually going on here. We're putting up trusses on that gym there. So now you can see the roof membrane is starting to go on, so we're gonna have that dried in here in the next two weeks. It'll be pretty substantially dried in by the end of this week, but fully dried in in about the next two weeks. The front entrance is moving along again. We've asked them to really prioritize the gym, 'cause we've got some things that we need to move along in critical path there to get concrete drying, so we can get floors down and bleachers in and, you know, get those things open. So we're stalling out a little bit here, but we're still on schedule with the entryway. We should see glass in about the next two to three weeks coming in for that entryway. The weight room at, at Lake City High School now is coming along nicely as well. Concrete will be going in this week on both the weight room and the wrestling room. So those are on track and should be open by the start of their wrestling season. The gym is moving along as well, fully dried in. You can see what's covered in the front of that picture is all of the flooring. So that's in there climatizing and getting ready to be laid towards the end of this week. We'll start laying that. And here, they're just doing prep work on the walls in there to get ready for putting a finish coat on the walls. And Dalton is substantially complete, so just in time for their open house, which is on Wednesday. So they delayed that start-of-school open house, so parents and students will be excited to go see the new music room in there. They're doing punch lists and stuff right now, but really substantially complete, just little, little bits here and there that they need to wrap up on that project. There you can see the PE storage, and the kids having fun at Dalton. Any questions about construction progress?
How's the budget on Dalton? Since it's, I know we probably have lots of bills coming in from the last month of work, but it's looking pretty good?
We still have draws coming in, but it looks, it looks to be on track there, so.
I had a question, you know, when we did our tour, we were talking about the new both, or the performance gym at CHS and not having any kind of, it has ventilation, but no heating and cooling, mostly just cooling. That's just stuck in my mind, and is that something we could revisit or talk about? I just, I worry that if that's our, our big performance gym and we have an event in there and we're kicking everything off and it's sweltering hot and people are gonna be like, "Well..." So I just wanted to hear your thought down the road. We don't have to talk about it tonight, but...
Sure. I mean, I think it's definitely, you know, something to consider. And I think as we get towards the, you know, next couple of months where we're wrapping up these projects, we'll know where we're at from a budget standpoint and look at, you know, what, what we have. We'll have to look at alternatives that were either accepted or not accepted. And, you know, we'll present some of that information for you guys to make some priorities and make some decisions on how we wanna move forward.
I guess, guess what I'm really getting at is, should that have ever been an alternative? When you build a performance gym, isn't cooling ability something that should have been included from the get-go? I guess that's kind of where I was going, and that worries me, you know? So hopefully we'll have money if it needs to be, but I'm not sure that we, I think it's something we should re-talk about.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't think Lake City has it either.
And it's sweltering hot oftentimes when people are not happy about it, so I...
Certainly graduation it is.
Right, and it's been an issue, and we hear about it every year, so we're...
Certainly for consideration.
And final question for me on this. Were we able to find accommodations for Coeur d'Alene High School's wrestling program with the delay we have just in getting their wrestling room done?
Yeah, so I think we've got about a couple of weeks that they're gonna have some challenges, and we're looking at putting them at Campfield right now and, and providing student transportation, busing to get them over there. So it looks like that's in the works to, to go forward and give them the ability to practice for those couple of weeks before the season starts.
Okay, thank you.
Did we cover the CMCG? That's, I, I think, per the board memo, that's a go, and we're on the Lakes project?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, that's signed, and we're moving forward with meetings with Geno and the architect.
Yeah, any updates on how that's going, or...
Uh, well, we've just, we had a meeting last week with the architects and Geno Construction to kinda revisit it, look at some initial cost savings. Geno's pulling up, pulling up their information from their previous bid to really study it this week. We'll be looking at, probably doing some workshops on that to, you know, really dive into that starting next week.
You'll keep us surprised if there's change in scope, big changes in scope.
Okay, almost there. Item N is policy for information. There's two policies tonight. 2100, 2100P, and 7215. Dr. Cook, why don't you handle 2100? I assume that's you, right?
Yeah, that's me. So on 2100, you can see the, the red line there. Basically, what we're looking at is trying to tighten this policy up a little bit and giving the board just clear, clear, clearly articulating the board's position as the governance kind of entity over setting curricula for the, the school district. If you recall, we had some issues with 20, Policy 2100P creating some areas in which we wound up in pretty significant conflict with what was being taught and what should be being taught. And so two, two items have come out of this. The first one is that we've tightened up 2100 to clearly define that. And we're asking for the board to suspend or rescind 2100P completely out of the policy manual until we have a time to kinda see what we've got with regards to the curricular audit findings, that we would be bringing, well, we haven't got, obviously, we haven't started the curriculum audit yet. But once we receive that input and see what things are going on out there, then revisiting the appropriateness of that policy. My, my first inkling is that that policy provided for mixed messaging right now, and I, it's my recommendation that it doesn't serve the board's purpose. If, if we wish, if the board wishes to somehow affirm that teachers should have some authority to, you know, if we're gonna declare something in policy versus academic freedom, I think we make a statement about academic freedom and not do things like quantify the amount of curriculum that is changed potentially by teachers, which, if you recall, 2100P, the policy, the procedural component of the policy under 2100 actually states numerically how much of the curriculum, what percentage that teachers can change. And, you know, taking that argument to an absurd level, you could theoretically change 25% of any curriculum by policy annually. And so you could turn a, a German I class into a French IV class in four years without ever having it go to board consideration. And so that's kind of a ridiculous example, but nonetheless, it, it creates the point that I think I'm trying to make, which is it's not a good practice to have that kind of autonomy out in the system. And I think we should kind of consider that moving forward. And so what we're presenting in this first month as an informational system is just a review of Policy 2100. Look at the language on this and determine whether or not we feel like this fits our needs with, with the board's respect to set the curriculum of the district and empower staff to bring that in front of the board for board's approval. And then if necessary, after we, we do the curriculum audit, we would have some more recommendations with regards to procedurally, if those modifications need to be done, what might that look like in the future?
Okay, questions, comments on this one? I have two. And one is, it's in the third line, but it says, "The board is responsible for curriculum adoption and must approve all significant changes." It might, I guess, concern, a word of caution is, what's significant? And so my note I put here is either we define what that is, which I think we're trying to get away from, 'cause that's what we had before, or we strike the word significant, and the board must approve all changes. And then, kind of the next line right after that just says, "Including the adoption of new textbooks and new courses before such changes are made." But I don't see where it really addresses the modification of existing courses. So we don't have to solve those tonight, but maybe if you can just look at that and comment on that for next month when it comes back for action. Okay. Any other questions, comments on that?
I was also a little confused by the second period, the staff paragraph. "The staff administration will suggest materials and resources to include supplies, books, materials, and equipment necessary for the goals of the education program." I thought that was, I wasn't sure what that sentence was really even getting at. It was, I think it was confusing. Like, books, does that mean free reading books, or... 'Cause those have to go through a different process anyway, so I didn't, I didn't know if that was even needed. It's the second August, it's the third paragraph, yeah.
Dr. Nelson, you've, you've got that? Okay. Okay. The next one, 7215, I think was from an exchange that Ms. Ebner and I had. Last month, I had just asked a question, and so thank you. I appreciate that you brought this back with a suggestion here of a language change, so thank you.
Yep. This policy, definitely, the changes were how I was interpreting it, so we may as well have it in policy in case anyone ever has a question about what the practice should be, so.
So really, my, I guess, my thought on this, so if you recall, we changed this policy within the last six months or so, where the board would be notified in writing when we had transfers in excess of $100,000. And I think something I was looking at last month's packet just made me think, well, you know, the intent was total transfers, right? And so you could theoretically, not that Ms. Ebner was doing this at all, but in the future, someone could make $10,000 transfers and avoid the reporting, kind of the way it was written, so. Thank you for putting it in there. Okay. So that's it on information items. The calendar, there's a few things noted down here. The October 15th M&amp;O workshop and the November 5th board meeting, but there's several other things going on. Just two I jotted down were October 3rd, which I think is Wednesday, we have the executive session with Dr. Cook and McPherson Jacobson. October 17th, we have our RISE chat. And, you know, I haven't talked to everyone about this, but a few months ago, I think when we were with the fellows from Montana doing our professional development, I said, "Thank you, Ivan and Bill", we talked about creating a board calendar, and I, I think that's still a work in progress or something we need to put together and bring forward. But one item I think we all gravitated towards on there was kind of a monthly chat, whether it be with a Chamber or PTA Alliance or whatever it is. We kind of view this RISE meeting as maybe the kickoff of that, that that would be the first one. And so maybe, I don't know that we wanna do those monthly with all the stuff we have going on, but maybe we start doing them every other month or something, so I'll be thinking about that. Maybe for December, we can start thinking about somebody. Okay. All right, sounds good. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. Okay, meeting adjourned.